Oh, we're rolling. All right. Good evening, everyone. Bear with me one second. I would, right, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 25th, here in the Board of Education meeting room. Welcome, everyone. As you can see, we are trying again to meet in person, at least with board members. Thank you to all our technical staff, who has made it possible to have the public Zoom in. And we are happy to have both the public join us in our meetings this way and able to participate in public comment this way. So thank you for everyone who put that into work. Thank you to the public, thank you to the administration, for all their work and input on the reopening plan. We will discuss the reopening again tonight. For those of you who haven't had a chance to kind of realize the timeline here, the administration put a plan into the state this past Friday. Yesterday, the governor amended kind of the requirements. And as a board, we can talk about that tonight. But I think what that signals most, and I'd like the public to be aware of, is this is an ever-evolving situation. So stick with us. We will communicate out to you. Stick with the administration. Comments, questions, concerns, bring them to us. But nothing is in stone because the situation is not in stone. So we look forward to hearing from members of the public. We look forward to hearing from everyone who's concerned on these matters and know that we are as interested as you. There has been some questions about the board's role, including a phone call I was on with Dr. Cardona today. Boards' roles have changed yet again with the governor's change in order. We are looking to understand exactly what our role is. Before, we were kind of looking at the administration for operational, day-to-day planning. At this point, we are now being told that there will be local controls over the plan to open with. It would seem to imply that we have a much more active role in that. But I am looking for further guidance on that. Cabe said they would get back to us. Dr. Cardona said he would get back to us. So as soon as I get that, I will both push that out to the board. So they know the administration, and we will update the public exactly on where we are. I would say I've heard from lots of students over the past week on their engagement on both national issues and how that affects education. I believe some will be speaking tonight. I will say we look forward to hearing from all students and alumni. And it's been my pleasure to have alumni and recent alumni engaged in what's going on in our schools. I'm sure there will be much to talk about. But the board is always here to listen to all of its residents and all that kind of care about Darien schools. So it's been a welcome engagement. I'm sure as we go through this, there might be a variance of opinions on things we hear, actions we take. But I think we should all be proud that our young people are accessing their government. With that, I will turn it over to public comment. Who is running our public comment Zoom tonight? Dr. Adley?
Mr. Trandberg is doing that.
Mr. Trandberg, do you have raised hands for public comment? I'm going to speak to all of you because I have no idea where the camera is.
Sorry, Lori Olson.
Okay. Please remember, please state your name and address. And all speakers have three minutes. I need a timer tonight.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. On behalf of myself, Lori Olson, 16 Littlebrook Road North, and Julie Best, 38 Red Rose Circle, we want to take a moment to say thank you to the administration and all of the people who participated in developing Darien's reopening plan. It is clear how much work and careful consideration went into developing the plans and the document. Obviously, there are still plenty of uncertainties surrounding the coming months. But it is extremely reassuring to have so much information and detail already in hand about how different scenarios will be managed. Thank you.
Mrs. Olson, thank you for your comment. Could you put your address in on the record for us?
Lori Olson, 16 Littlebrook Road North.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Next is Allegra Mulkinfin.
Mrs. Mulkinfin?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Allegra Mulkinfin, 195 Hollow Tree Ridge Road. Thanks so much for this opportunity to speak. And thank you in advance to the board for reviewing and reading through the materials, I believe Mrs. Ockman sent to you earlier today. I'm a graduate of the class of 2015. And I just graduated from Middlebury College earlier this winter. And earlier this month, along with a fellow classmate, Kyla Johns, we got together to found a group called Rage Time, which stands for Reform and Amend General Education to Teach and Integrate Minority Experiences. And we're really focused on raising awareness about some of the challenges in our community, which are certainly not unique, are being addressed all over the country. But really want to help focus on how can we make some changes in Darien Public Schools and come together as a community in this time. So, I'll start my video. Hi, everyone. So now hopefully with these materials that you've all received, we would love to continue a conversation that's already been going on with some of the administrators and really think about how we can come together to create resources that focus on not only diverse curriculum, but also anti-racist education as well as mental health. I see some names that are familiar in this group. And I think engagement from parents, teachers, alumni and students, as well as current students, and especially minority students, is really important. And engaging those populations in all discussions about change going forward, including, I know there are ongoing conversations with the Board of Education and special committees. I think representation is really important. And now more than ever, I think it's very important to listen to those whose voices we might not otherwise listen to, or hear even. And so we've submitted a petition, a full letter with signatures, along with personal testimonies from a variety of groups. And we hope you'll take that into consideration as we take action to show that we don't tolerate acts of discrimination in our community. And we can't wait any longer for these changes. So to work together to continue these conversations, to find some common ground and make this community more welcoming and have education access for all. So thanks again for your time and look forward to continuing conversations in coming weeks.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Ms. Jocelyn Delancey.
Ms. Delancey. Jocelyn?
Hello. Is it my turn, I guess?
Yes.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education and public school stakeholders. My name is Jocelyn Delancey. I think you've seen me before. President of the Darien Education Association and fifth grade teacher at Tokonik. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the teachers and to advocate for the best interests of our students and staff. There's no group of people more eager and hopeful to return to normalcy and building-based in-person instruction than the teachers of Darien Public Schools. We've taken time to grieve the loss of what we know to be best practices for teaching and learning and come to terms with knowledge that teaching and learning will not be what we've come to know and love. We know all of these things and are on board to come back, but only under conditions that are as safe as possible and that allow for us to provide the best possible teaching and learning under the circumstances. This being said, the DEA has some major questions and concerns about our current plan to go back to the buildings with 100% participation and daily attendance. While we understand that central services and building-based administrators have been working tirelessly on a plan, we have some questions regarding how some aspects of this plan will be carried out. Class sizes of over 20 students in some buildings is one safety concern, as well as the fact that the desks will only be a minimum of three feet apart, while guidelines still push for six. We worry how cohorting will work to keep special education staff, other service providers, and specials teachers safe moving from room to room. While we understand the spacing limitations at the high school, having students leaving midday to have lunch and then come back to the buildings concerns us as well. There are many more safety concerns, including some rooms with no windows, PPE access and protocols, and what actually would call for closing schools. Now that Governor Lamont has changed his mandate about reopening, I'm hoping that the district can figure out some more creative and safer options for getting back into the building, even if that involves a hybrid model or remote learning. Aside from this physical safety, another pressing issue is the district's decision to promote live streaming as the primary option for students and families who feel it is safer to follow a path of remote learning. I can assure you that the teachers do not feel that live streaming is the best practice. Please keep in mind that live streaming is not the same as live instruction, that the live instruction that we provided during e-learning. Live streaming is a camera placed in the classroom and your child will be watching the classroom from the security of your home for the duration of the school day. DEA has many concerns on how this best engages children in learning. Is this an interactive livestream or just a feed that students can watch? If it's interactive, how do teachers manage both the group of students in the classroom and ones who are at home? If we're teaching with masks on, how will students who are watching the feed be able to hear or understand us? How do you protect the privacy of other students in the actual classroom, especially students who receive services for IEPs and 504s, who has access to our feed? If students are being videotaped throughout the day, how might that hinder their ability to take academic risks? We have many more questions and would like to ask about this in parents. But since I only have about three minutes, and I'm pretty sure you can mute me at any time, I'll end with this.
You have about 10 seconds, Mrs. Delancey.
We strongly believe that remote learners would get a better and stronger education if we paired in-remote cohorts and assigned teachers who would be able to teach remotely, at times live from their computers, and give them the attention and access to learning they deserve. We want to be able to provide our students with the highest quality education possible and also keep everyone healthy and safe. We don't believe our current plans allow us to achieve that goal. I know if we sit down together and--
Mrs. Delancey, I'm going to ask you to wrap up, please.
We can come up with a plan that gets us there. When the teachers are safe and feeling supported, we will also be able to keep the students safe, feeling supported and learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Next one for public comment.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for participating. We will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Adley?
Good evening, everybody. And for those people who are Zooming in, thank you for attending this evening. And as Jocelyn said, and as the board chair just mentioned, since the last time we got together, the focus has been on completing the plan for the district and submitting it to the state of Connecticut. And I just want to recognize everybody who participated in that process, whether it was through the reopening task force and the recommendations that stemmed from there. And actually, all the constituents from our parent staff, student feedback, anything that we received back from any constituents, we very much appreciate everybody's input into it. It will be an ongoing process. And as the chair just said, the ink is barely dry. And here we are facing probably a new set of rules and a new set of engagement. But the good news is we anticipated that to some degree. Perhaps not just quite as quickly. But nonetheless, we have some plans that I think we can provide a great foundation for any work that needs to continue. And we have been forthright in the communication that this is going to be an ongoing process. It's going to be iterative. It's going to change between now and some aspects. And some aspects have to be refined as we move through the next month or so. But with that, I appreciate everybody's participation thus far. We do have a number of staff members, I just want to say, in passing, who have been participating in various professional development technology, professional learning experiences. One of us at the high school, where if you remember the technology presentation, there was a vanguard of about 15 faculty members, staff members, who are going to sort of pilot a lot of the technology, particularly around the use of the iPad, and really be the pod and the experts in the building. So they have been up and running.
Dr. Adley, could you move the mic a little closer to you?
I think you can't hear that.
I just got a text that the live feed is difficult to hear.
Okay, I will do that.
So we should all try to speak directly.
We also have a group, that's probably better, is it, right there? I won't go back to the start if you don't mind. We have a cohort of educators from K through eight who will be starting their series of professional learning on the use of the Chromebook-infused classroom. They have to do a book study under the guidance of the author. And they have to do a number of R's in terms of the professional learning around the use of the Chromebook. I want to thank Chris and the Technology Department for facilitating that for us. Hiring, since we last met, has been going very well. I have to say the candidates have been tremendous thus far. And you'll see that coming through the PIR result, the PIR report. Summer school in the ESY is sort of winding down. We budgeted, we adjusted the budget to about $46,000, and it came in somewhere over $100,000. So we did a wee bit better than we first anticipated. ESY, the Bridges Weeks will continue. Most people here are familiar with that, for students who need continued services. And would like to avail themselves of that. So that will continue after this Friday. And I'd just say that there's an understandable concern and heightened awareness this week. And I know through the First Electmen's message in also about student gatherings and adult gatherings, particularly on school grounds. And I would just mention that, and just reiterate to members of the public, that any gatherings of students in a formal way needs the permission of the high school administration. And that everybody would need to comply with the state and local executive orders. So if there are gatherings, they should go through the facilities office here, mic's here tonight, but they should go through the facilities office and just be approved. With that, I thank everybody for their work thus far and the board for your engagement and for what's going to be a continued process over the next month or so.
Can I just, before we move into our next thing, can someone on Zoom, maybe Deb, let us know if it's gotten any better? We've tried to increase volume, speak into microphones. Can you hear us better? Okay. So we will continue to try to adjust. We'll move on with business, but we will adjust as best we can. We will move on to the approval of minutes. It is requested, I'm going to take these as a batch, Deb. It is requested that the board approve the following: minutes of the special meeting and executive session held June 23, 2020, and minutes of the regular meeting held June 23, 2020. May I have a motion? Mr. Burke so moves, a second. Mr. Maroney, all in favor. And that is unanimous. Mrs. McCammon, I can't see you. If you could, there we go. That is unanimous. Then, minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on June 27, 2020. May I have a motion? Mrs. Stein so moves. Mr. Burke seconds. All in favor. That is also unanimous. Then, minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on June 16, 2020, and minutes of the special meeting held on July, I'm sorry. Minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on July 16, 2020, and minutes of the special meeting held on July 16, 2020. May I have a motion? Mr. Maroney, Mr. Burke, all in favor. And that is also unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Any board committee reports? Mr. Denine?
Thank you. Just a quick update on the Ox Ridge Building Committee. Construction drawing documents are done, and we've received them. There are three sets of documents, which are in the hundreds of pages, along with four volumes of specifications. So we're printing out some documents to have accessible and review, but doing a lot of it electronically. We're looking to schedule a meeting, hopefully, next week. Next steps, now that we have construction documents, are to go to a third-party code review and overall look at the specs, ready to go out to bidding. The architects will be here to make a presentation at the August Board of Ed meeting. And there will possibly be action on approval of those documents once the building committee has approved the final construction drawings. We will need the board approval before we go back to the state for the next meeting with the state. I don't know, anything else, Dr. Adley?
No, I think that's good. The meeting with the State Department of Education was very well received.
Yes. Good.
Sorry, working on volume control.
Thank you, Duke. Any other board committee reports? Mrs. Ritchie?
In the days and weeks to come.
Yes, so for those who couldn't hear, there were some questions around ECR. We had some information about reduced reimbursement rates. I've asked the administration to look into that. And Finance Committee certainly should take that up. And certainly, I think the whole board should have an update once we have some verified numbers. Any other board committee reports? Okay. We will move on to presentations and discussions. We will start tonight with an update from the Strategic Planning Committee. Dr. Richard Lemmons is here again to join us. Dr. Adley, I'll throw it to you first.
Dr. Lemmons, can you hear us okay?
I can.
Oh, terrific. Thank you. Well, welcome back. This was a scheduled report back to the Board of Education. Since last we gathered, the committee has been meeting over the summer to continue its work around the guiding documents of the mission, vision, values, and goals. And I think probably Dr. Lemmons would have, if we had to just finish another, maybe another hour, we would have been able to bring something more complete, actually, here. But I wanted just to continue the, to honor the timetable that we had. We said we'd come back, so he's coming back sort of, it's in a sort of good shape. But another couple of hours could have finished off this wee part. But with that being said, I'll kick it over to Richard, who's going to update the board and engage the board in some discourse around where we are at the moment.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Richard Lemmons. I'm the Executive Director of the Connecticut Center for Still Change. It's an honor to be back with the board. And also I'd like to say good evening to all the Darien administration staff and community watching in. Before I get into the strategic planning, given that I work with dozens of school districts across the state and dozens across the entire United States, I would just say congratulations on the development of the reopening plan, having seen the work of Darien and also the work of other districts. This is an historic period of time. And I don't know if we really have a full grasp of the complexity of trying to move into a new phase of learning in the next school year, whichever scenario it entails. And no matter what, you ultimately have to decide as school starts and the school continues to be here. No doubt, it will be challenging. But I appreciate all the hard work of members of the community, administration staff, who helped put together that plan. You have our admiration at the Connecticut Center for Still Change. I'm going to share my screen, just by way of making this a little bit easier, to walk through an update. The purpose for me being with you this evening is to give you an update on the strategic planning process to date. I've come back at regular intervals to give you an update in concert with superintendent giving you an update also, seeking any feedback, any more questions, any guidance that you have, and then to outline next steps as we move forward. So this is a very busy PowerPoint slide. In the world of presentations, this would not get great marks if it was being evaluated. But it's really built as a visual to outline the process that we've been using. Back several months ago, we put together a steering committee. The board put together a steering committee. And once we got that group of educators, stakeholders, together, we did an initial analysis of the district. We identified themes and patterns, and that helped us to basically organize the work. We identified questions and tried to figure out how we could answer those questions with sources of evidence and data, not just shooting from the hip and not just with our perceptions. And then we began to identify patterns and findings and trends for each of those buckets of work identified. And so this big red circle here, we've accomplished all of this work. We've made quite a bit of progress over the last several months, even with the slowdown created by COVID. The steering committee was remarkable in its ability to focus and be resilient and use new technologies to continue moving the work forward, to continue having deep conversations about the future of Darien Public Schools and what the work ought to be in the coming years. We're now in the process of moving, based upon all of those conversations about the analysis of the district, we're in this place of trying to build out the components of a strategic plan. And that will focus on developing foundational documents, such as mission, vision, core values, which we're deep into. And I'm going to show you some draft versions tonight. And then in our very next meeting, which is coming up mere days from today, we will also begin to identify goal areas based upon the needs assessment that we've conducted over the past few months. So we, what I'm going to actually do, this is kind of bad pedagogical practice, and all the teachers who are watching from their homes realize, you know, you don't put certain things up if you want them to hear your words before they're reading the screen. I came to the board a few weeks ago and asked for your feedback on mission, vision, core values. That followed work with the steering committee, soliciting their best ideas around what ought to be a mission, what ought to be a vision, what ought to be a core value. And I'm going to, for the mission and vision, we have draft statements that we've been working pretty close to having finalized in the form that we're going to ultimately bring back to you. So we're not asking you to make any movements on these tonight. We're just basically running these past you. If you have questions or reactions to them, I'm happy to take them. But you will have an opportunity in the future to react to these, tweak them, adapt them, obviously, in the context of a full strategic plan. So as you might recall, mission statements tend to be articulations of what you see as the core business of the organization. And using the thinking of the steering committee, using the thinking of the board members, we went to work in the last couple of sessions and tried to hammer out a statement that captured the essence of what both of those groups were saying. And the statement that we're working with right now as a mission statement for Darien Public Schools is inspiring a love of learning and developing critical thinkers, problem solvers, and innovative creators who are compassionate and contributing citizens. Something that seemed important to the steering committee, and I would say, based upon my memory of the last time I was with you, seemed important to members of the board, was that the steering committee wanted to make clear that the core part of the work of Darien Public Schools is not just to educate students in a vacuum. It's to prepare them to leave their mark in whatever way they want to leave their mark. And that that needed, that's captured in the contributing citizens and the compassionate citizens, and that that was broad and open. They also recognized that there were certain kinds of skills and dispositions that people were going to need to really thrive in their modern society. And that included critical thinking, problem solving, and innovation. And this love of learning was important also. Where it's starting, where it was, I think, important to all of the members of the steering committee, from the very first conversation that the steering committee had, that there was a stronger balance in Darien Public Schools and that that balance was experienced by the students and that we might help generate, cultivate, a love of learning in the process. I'm going to go to the vision, and then I'll go to the core values, and then I'll pull back out of the presentation and field any questions and responses. The vision statement should basically tell the story of where you're going. should basically tell the story of where you're going, or somehow, sometimes organizations think a vision statement as if everything were going perfectly, what would be going on? And the steering committee used the feedback and the guidance of the Board and also their brainstorming from several weeks ago and worked towards this draft, preparing all students today to thrive in a world tomorrow. And a number of the features of this statement that were important to members of the steering committee, and I also seem to be important to certain members of the Board, is that there is a future element to this, but it's broad, that we're, there's an acknowledgement that the world tomorrow is different than the world of the past. And it's also going to be, every day we go into the future is going to be more different. We can't even identify what those differences are going to be just five, 10, 15 years from now. And so we wanted to keep the statement rather broad, a changing world tomorrow, but there's a recognition that there's work that has to get done today. So preparing students today to thrive in a changing world tomorrow created this simple elegant tagline that members of the steering committee seem to have a lot of energy around. The last foundational document that we're working on within the steering committee is an articulation of core values. And I put the word, the modifier emerging here because we're still working through drafts. There, the steering committee has had multiple conversations about core values and the Board has contributed, and there's a lot of consensus around the majority of the ideas. We haven't wordsmithed all of these. In some ways, some of these words are just placeholders for the steering committee to do some more work. But many of the big ideas are here. I'm not just, there may be one or two that will be added and there, it's possible that a couple of these could be combined. But this notion that there's a want for people to have integrity, there's a want to have a balanced approach that's not just about academic excellence, it also honors wellness in a broad way, there's a still a commitment to excellence, a commitment to everybody doing their best as much as possible, a commitment to equity, a push for innovation, a recognition that collaboration is the way that you solve novel problems and you learn socially together, a commitment to diversity and inclusion throughout the community of Darien Public Schools, and also a commitment to respect. And what I would underscore in terms of core values is that core values should be an articulation of the values committed to on behalf of the adults first and foremost. And there's a lot of energy, I would, I think I'm speaking on behalf of the steering committee, that there's symmetry where these core values could also speak to the kind of values you'd want your students to embody on a day-to-day basis. But first and foremost, it's starting with, well, who are the employees, whose job it is to make sure the organization lives up to its vision and mission. And so the next meeting that we're going to dig back into these emerging core values, try to get them closer to a final, a semi-final version that we can present to you as recommendations, just as we had with the mission and the vision. And the step after that, and we think we'll get far in our next meeting also, is to begin to identify small numbers and priority areas for the years ahead. So we spent quite a bit of time identifying the needs, the assets, the challenges, the strengths of the school district. And based upon that information and based upon the vision and these emerging vision, mission, core values, the steering committee is going to wrestle with identifying a kind of finite and bounded number of goal areas that should be the priorities for the coming years. They should come directly out of the needs assessment, but they should also speak to the mission, vision, and core values. And the last piece that I would add is that the, there's another steering committee that is active at work under the guidance of the high school principal, where there's a work on the articulation of a portrait of the graduate or a vision of the graduate, which is basically a consolidation of the most essential skills, competencies, and dispositions that Darien Public Schools believes that a graduate should possess when they walk across the graduation stage. And this goes well beyond the accumulation of credits and classes, and it tends to speak to kind of the essence of the person you want to walk across, mind and heart, dispositions and skills and competencies. And they're deep into that work. And we're getting an update, you know, each of our meetings from that committee, and there's cross pollination where there are members who are sitting on both committees, so that the work we're doing is also feeding that committee. And ultimately, the vision of the graduate will be another statement that will show up at the beginning of your strategic plan along with your mission, vision, and core values. So I'm going to pause there and see if there are questions, comments, feedback from the Board.
Board comments or questions? Oh, Mr. Seeny.
Yeah, sorry, just quickly, so a few weeks, they'll, the committee's going to finalize this and then present to the Board for approval. Is that kind of the timeline we're looking at, Dr.?
So I would say Dr. Lemmons will probably talk about the goals that have to go along with this. And as much as I would say that would be quick, I think the Board's ownership of those goals will probably take a couple of meetings, I'm thinking. So, but it'll be wound up, I'm going to say, I would say a couple of months, right? And it should be, should be done at the latest. Okay, thank you.
I would imagine, yeah, I'd imagine as a Board we'll discuss, push, bring our perspective to a lot of these areas. And I'd love it if it would take one meeting, but I think it's, you know, thoughtful that it probably takes us longer than that. Both to Richard, although I'm not, depending on your involvement of this, and Alan, when do we, when does the Board expect to hear an update on the vision of the graduate?
So that work is continuing and it will probably continue at least for another couple of months, at least, if not a little bit more.
And as I understand it, they're in the thick of looking at evidence that they have been collecting. And I think that phase they're deep into, and I imagine that sometime in the next few weeks, maybe they'll be past the beginning of that phase and it might be time to get a quick update from them.
Any other thoughts or questions? I can't, Mrs. McCabman.
Hi, Richard, nice to see you.
Nice to see you also.
And everybody. Richard, one of the things I think that is confusing at this age in the process is this sounds like a lot of high-level language with no purpose. Can you just put the fine point on it? Can you talk to us about how organizations use these three documents and how they interact with the strategic plan to make a really effective organizational structure? And can you hear me? I might not have.
I could. There was a little bit of slowdown. I don't know if it's on my side with my internet connection. Hopefully you can hear me. A great, this is a great question, and it goes to the heart of whether an organization makes any use of the strategic plan or whether they treat the use of the strategic plan as an event and not the foundation of how they're going to organize their priorities. In our experience, districts that are highly strategic leverage the strategic plan as an anchor as they make decisions. And they tend to take these broad documents that are often written with the intention of spanning multiple years and on a regular basis, usually on an annual basis, but some districts do this more frequently, kind of 90-day plans. They turn these into more action-oriented plans. Whenever a district decides this is our strategic planning phase, they ask particular departments and they ask particular schools to take stock of the district-wide strategic plan to identify the priorities for their unit while staying coherent with the overall district vision, staying coherent with vision, mission, and core values, and the portrait of the graduate, and to figure out what's the most important work going ahead, given their evidence and their past work. And then what's critical is for the organization to put in routines that keep people in relationship with the plan. Regular meetings where people are asking each other, so what progress are we making? Did we get as far as we thought we were going to get? And is that, if we didn't, was that a failure of implementation or was it a failure of ideas? Or did we learn something fundamentally about how to do this work better and we had to make some adjustments? And do we bring that into the plan, that new thinking into the plan? So we at the, at the Connecticut Center for School Change, kind of as you're wrapping up a strategic plan, we typically advise districts, now it's time to try to put together a kind of an improvement infrastructure. And it might just be as simple as make some agreements around who's owning what parts of the plan and when you get those people together to ask hard questions in the presence of evidence about, did you accomplish what you set out to accomplish? If you did, are certain goals now obsolete because you've gone past them? And if you haven't made the progress that you wanted to, what did we learn in the process of trying to implement and what adjustments need to be made on a long-going basis? But, and what I would, the last button I would put on this is that this is where a lot of organizations fall short, is it's a whole lot easier to put energy into this bounded process of developing a plan than it is to be disciplined in an ongoing, regular way and not let the tyranny of the urgent take over and push off more strategic thinking on a regular basis, kind of outside of the organization.
So, Richard, to pick up on that, something you said struck me, and I don't know if the Strategic Planning Committee has had a chance to talk about this. Some of what you have in these drafts, I think, already exists in Darien, and some might be considered certain cultural changes. So part of what you said was the articulation of the values first must be committed to on behalf of the adults. And I assume that's staff, parents, leaders. Have you guys talked a little bit about how you get buy-in to something like this?
So what I would say is that has not been the primary conversation of the steering committee, kind of how to, how to put this out into the broader community and to get people to understand and hopefully come to own it. One of the strategies that you chose as a Board, and I would remind you of this because I think it was the right move, is you handed this work of creating a strategic plan out to a broader group, and it included stakeholders, the parents, included educators of different roles, of different levels, of different job descriptions, with the express purpose of having more voices so that it's informed, but ultimately so that it has fewer blind spots and more people are likely to embrace it when it comes out. So I think that's one step, but I do think as we, as we start to come to the, as we speak, as we come to you with a plan, one of the conversations, and I know that the Superintendent is already thinking about this, is how to, how to put this document out into the community and get more understanding first and foremost before you're asking people to, to really own it and embrace it.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Deane?
So Dr. Lemon, thank you. It's nice to see from our little exercise some of the themes coming through, and thanks for the great update. Question for you, as you've gone through this process with our district, and thank you to the committee for continuing this work through the pandemic, but you've gone through this before with other districts, but not necessarily during a pandemic. So what kind of aha or learning moments came out of this work during everything that's going on that you think has added value to how we're looking at this strategic plan?
Ooh, that's a, that's a million-dollar question. So you're not, you're not holding back tonight. You're firing on all cylinders. That's a question I'd love to think about some more, but I will give you one takeaway that I have had both in terms of working with Darien, but also with a collection of other districts that were in strategic planning processes in different phases when the pandemic hit, you know, around March 13th, when everybody began to shut down, as well as other districts that were doing certain projects with the Connecticut Center for School Change that involved long-term strategy, whether they were formal strategic plans or not. One rather technical one, but I think it's going to have a lasting impact on culture, is there is work that you can do remotely without having to get everybody physically in the same room. And as simple as that sounds now and as cliche as it might feel, I think across the state of Connecticut and across the United States, there were a number of people wondering what work can go on in this new world order. In the beginning, most people were focused on, well, how do we get kids fed? And how do we get out materials to kind of keep them busy for the first two weeks? And as school districts began to realize that we were going to be doing this in a new way for a while, the conversation was, well, how do we do this better under these extreme situations? And what I was surprised by, I wouldn't say shocked, but pleasantly surprised, the sheer number and percentage of districts that said, we've got to go, even though we have this new urgency and this new crisis we have to respond to, we're not going to put everything else on the back burner because we can't. We've got to keep the work going forward. And Darien Public Schools, the steering committee, everybody stepped up to the plate. And when, when we decided it was time to turn the ignition switch on again, everybody showed up. We used Zoom in creative new ways. We tried to use different forms of technology within Zoom. And, and it's not as pleasurable when you don't get to see people and shake hands and give hugs, and there's that, that cultural part of not being in the same room together. But I was, I've been pleasantly surprised at how much work can fundamentally be done this way. And I think that it's going to, as people are already saying, it's going to reshape the workspace. Whether, I think it's a bigger question whether it's going to reshape the classrooms ultimately, but at least right now, in adults, adult work and the work of this kind of stuff, this works really well in this format.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Dr. Lemon's question, you gave us the draft statements and goals and other documents you had today. You gave us a presentation last week. Given the importance of the work you're doing and the dependency that a lot of work we're going to be doing going forward has on this, are we rushing you? Do you have the time you need? And I ask that sincerely. I'd rather take a step back and maybe slow this down to let you do this the right way as opposed to keep you doing a timeline, but given all the changes we've had, maybe isn't realistic at this point. So I turn it to you, but you know, I would raise that question if, you know, you need a little extra time. I know for when, I'd like to see this done not as rushed, not that it has been anyway, but I would rather make sure it was, you know, thorough and thoughtful. Thank you.
I deeply appreciate that sentiment. And one thing that the Superintendent and I spoke about, maybe two days after that February presentation that I came to give you, right when we were beginning to talk about COVID and we were a couple of weeks away from shutting down schools, we were paying attention to the news reports. And then within a couple of weeks, there was talk about do we need to cancel our next meeting? And he and I made a commitment to each other, we were going to keep it going forward at whatever pace made sense for Darien, and that you were going to have Connecticut Center for School Change as a partner however long it takes. So from my point of view, we're going to do it at the pace that the steering committee and the Superintendent and the Board of Education request. I'm in no artificial hurry. I want it to make sense for you and the community in Darien, and you have a lot on your plate. So we've, we've tried to be parsimonious. We've tried not to rush. We, we wanted in the last couple of meetings to get closer to goals, but we, we hit these powerful conversations where we were getting to the vein of some big ideas. And the Superintendent and I just kind of said, well, okay, let's pull back and try not to cover as much ground in this meeting. Let's keep the conversation deep. We reached resolution. So it means a couple more meetings before we're ultimately ready to bring something to you. But I think we're moving to you, but I think we're moving ahead in the spirit of what you just said. We're going to get the work done and done well, and hopefully not take forever on it, but do it in a thoughtful way, given all that you're facing as a district.
Great. Any other board comments or questions? Dr. Adley?
Mr. Lemon, Dr. Lemon, could you just give the board a wee precursor of, without taking all night, but just real quickly, a wee precursor of what they expect in the goals process?
So, in terms of, in the way that this works in most of the districts that I work with, and I, and the superintendent, I've had some conversations around this, of what makes the most sense for Darien, I typically advise school districts in the strategic plan to have broad goal areas, ones that really stretch across multiple years, and ones that might require multiple measures to really understand what you've made. They're not overly reductionistic, they're bold, they're moving you in the right direction. And on an annual basis, I encourage districts to make that a little bit more tangible, so that you're not, you do have some metrics and some measures and some more finite timelines to say, what are we going to do in the 21, 22, or the 22, 23 school year? It's obviously wedded and tightly connected to that strategic plan, but allow, it provides more concrete guidance to administrators, teachers, and staff inside the organization, and it ultimately provides guidance to you in your work that you do with the superintendent, to keep the district going in the same direction that you're going. And typically, in that kind of process, schools and departments are creating, as I said earlier, their own versions of plan that are highly aligned to the strategic plan. And ultimately, I think what will make sense to you down the road, is to figure out how, what level of granularity of those plans become the board's goals, as smaller units within the whole organization are creating goals, and some of those might be too small. I think in the meantime, you probably ought to be thinking about a transition. So, you are coming out of one phase, you've got a superintendent who's going to be going into the second year soon, and you have a steering committee pulling together a planning committee, a plan, a strategic plan, that won't quite be ready for adoption at the beginning of this next school year. So, I think you have some big, big goal areas that you ought to focus on. One is making sure that this transition to 2021, whatever it looks like, and whatever final scenario comes to be, when the school year starts and pivoting, because it's likely that health demands of this pandemic are going to require some nimbleness and some flexibility, that that's a big goal area. Another big goal area might be the finalization and the adoption and the rollout of the strategic plan itself. And perhaps the superintendent has some other ideas of a finite number of goals, but it seems to me, given this transition year, given the importance of getting back to whatever new form of schooling we're going to do in this year, and implementing that reopening plan, coupled with getting this strategic plan, could be the better part of, and the most important priorities for you this year, and perhaps coupled with some of your buildings and facilities issues that you're still working on.
Thank you. So, thank you to Dr. Lemmons, thank you to the Strategic Planning Steering Committee. It's a lot of work, I know it's a lot of hours, it's much appreciated, and we look forward to getting a hold of some of those raw ideas, so as a board, we can make some final decisions. But we appreciate all the work, we appreciate you being here again tonight, Dr. Lemmons, and we look forward to the next update.
Take care, everybody.
Take care.
Thank you, Richard.
We will move forward to an update on school reopening and the proposed adjustments to the 2020, 2021 district calendar. Dr. Adley?
I'm sorry, Tara, can we just, I think we need to make a motion to amend item 7B, so that it is an action item, because I believe we're going to vote on this.
So, for the board's consideration, the change to the schedule, and the change to the calendar is with guidance from the state. Typically, we take a two-meeting cycle to approve calendar changes, however, at the moment, even if I anticipate more, our next meeting is scheduled for the end of August. So, with full discussion and consideration, we can amend to make this an action item. Deb, I think probably the best way to go is to let the discussion ensue, make sure the board feels comfortable, and then we can entertain a motion to amend the agenda there.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, though. Dr. Adley?
So, yes, the calendar will be, is sort of part of this discussion, anyway. So, thank you for reading the over 100-page document, thank you for those, again, for everybody who participated. And I think you'll find that the document, minimally, minimally, and certainly much more than that, will provide a tremendous foundation for moving forward over the next month or so. So, just a big high level, certainly let you read it at your leisure, but at a big high level, we're looking at the three models that we have to do, which are in-person, the hybrid, and the remote model. Again, the design is really to allow us to at least move from one to another, maybe not linearly. You could start in one and quickly be in another one, and what you think is the start, as we just found out yesterday, may not be what happens in September. But essentially, your in-person model is everybody in the five days a week, and so that's really kind of where we are with that. You would have a shortened day on a Friday, just to give you a wee sense of some things that maybe have changed on Friday to really clean the schools. It would be e-learning, sorry, in schools, the in-school would be in-school five days a week, with the shortened day on the Friday, that's what I meant to say, for professional learning and cleaning the building. The hybrid is essentially through creating some of the cohorts, and it would be essentially an A/B schedule, or two days a week for one group, two days a week for another group, and then that would be a half-day of learning on the Friday, for cleaning the schools again, and also professional learning. And the remote learning is everybody out, actually what we started with back in March, and certainly we have lessons learned from that, and we have still work to do in all of these areas, preparing for all of the different settings. So, those are the three we were planning for, until we heard differently yesterday, for the in-person five days a week. Until I actually get something, I would say to the board, until I actually get something in writing from the State Department, that would be the status of it right now, but it looks like they're going to give us local control to make that decision. If we do that, I would say we would have to do that in close consultation with our Director of Public Health, and our medical advisor in particular, and also our person who's in charge of our COVID here, Alicia, as the Director of Nursing, and the position she holds, so we'll be in close consultation with our health officials primarily. But those are the three, those are the three models we have to do. At the board's pleasure, would you like me to go through this quickly, and then just circle back, or?
Please.
Okay, all right, just, I'll do it real quick.
Have you started? We're frozen.
Well, I think we're frozen, we'll see in a minute. Oh, there you are, okay. So, some of the big takeaways, yes, they are three feet apart, and I would say that we would have a very difficult time, if not impossible, time to do it at six feet. And we are doing the APA, the American Pediatric Association recommendation, which is with the three feet, and also the wearing of the mask. Elementary is into the grade levels with their actual classes. Middle school have really team cohorts, and probably within the teams that you can, that you traditionally think of, they'll be broken down into other cohort classes, essentially. And high school is literally impossible to do the cohort, and I'm just being perfectly frank. What we're trying to do is mitigate the circumstances, the social distancing, physical distancing as best as possible. I mean, that's really the strategy at the high school.
Chris, would you move that place? It's responding slowly.
Will face masks or face coverings, as they're referred to in the actual document itself, have to be worn by all students? And we talked the last time, ultimately, if a student cannot, if there are reasons for it, medical or otherwise, we work around those. If not, I mean, ultimately, a student, or a staff member, an adult, I should say, has to wear the mask. We are in a pandemic health crisis, so it's important that we don't compromise the individual's health, or any of the other students and staff in the actual building. And, I mean, it's always the first priority of an administrator, and this Board of Education, any Board of Education, is the health and safety of the students and the staff in the buildings. Face covering breaks, and when six feet of distance can be managed, we will do that. And we'll also have breaks outside of the day for students to have an opportunity to take a mask break, which would be essentially outside. Also, the staff will have available the plastic mask, should they need to or want to actually wear those. The cleaning and hygiene, there's a number of processes, Michael is here, there's a number of processes that will be put in place, from regular cleaning throughout the day, cleaning, bathroom cleaning, bus transportation, cleaning between the actual shifts. We've also addressed, trying to address as best as we possible, do the best job that we can with the indoor air quality, and Mike can talk a little bit about that for later The buses, out early, the buses was always going to be a problem. We were never going to be able to do, in fact, I don't think any district can do what the state sort of model about the diagonal, and about a third of the bus being filled, that's just literally not possible. So, it'll be to near capacity, I think we were below, we were about 90% of the rider capacity from last year, in terms of what parents actually indicated to us. And there will be process of where you sit in the bus, how you get on the bus, how you get off the bus, because if there is contact tracing, we need to know where people are within six feet in order to mitigate things and take some interventions. And again, we'll do some of the cleaning in between the actual runs, which you'll see as a financial cost. So, the hybrid, again, just to talk about that, you're going to experience both in-person and out of school, and again, that's a couple of days a week, essentially. Priorities are remote for all students in that model, again, sort of a half-day sort of model type thing. The buildings will be cleaned again thoroughly, and teachers will be doing professional learning. There will be synchronous and asynchronous learning experience from home. Clearly, one of the feedback that we got the last time for learning at home was more synchronous type activities, as best as possible. So, for students receiving support services, or indeed for special education, there's a lot of planning going around that particular model. And one of the things I would say we're most conscious of is to meet our commitment to inclusion, and providing the least restrictive learning environment. We're just very conscious of not creating different groups of students in any capacity, whether the students that receive special services, or they're in different levels of courses or otherwise. Social and emotional learning was a big priority for the staff, for our parents, and there's a big component here of social and emotional learning that's built into the actual day in each of the schools. If you look at the report, you'll see a wee day in the life of an elementary teacher, or an elementary student, a middle school student, and a high school student, so it'll give you a wee sense of some of these things. We're trying to work with the community in terms of front-loading some education, and some videos, and that type of sort of resource. You'll see the professional development of staff is coming up in the calendar, and this is one of the areas where we'll be trying to support the staff. Well, here it is, the calendar, actually, right there. So, essentially, what we proposed the last time here, we were at the board, we were going to take the full days out of the main calendar year, and put it and front-load them, and not have any professional development days. Well, two days later, we got notice from the state that they're giving district permission to do 177 days. So, I don't think you can give the staff too much professional learning around this, it'll only benefit the students from our perspective. So, what we would like to do is start the school year three days later, and that's what you see in the calendar proposal, and maintain those days throughout the year, because we know we're going to need them anyway. So, that's really the proposal that is before us, and that would result in the first day of school being September 3rd. And actually, a third and the fourth would be sort of half-days to transition the kids into, sort of, just transition them into a different school experience. You can sort of see these main topics, these are the main professional development topics for the staff, both at the start of the year and throughout the year. And a summary of the COVID expenses, I think you should have as part of your packet, a more detailed outline of this bottom-line number. This is still a work in progress, and will still have revision along the way. There are some that are still to be determined, and they are noted in your packet, but that continues to be just fluid, as we plan accordingly for the start of the year. But, again, you have the details in your actual board packet for that particular number.
Before I open it up to questions, I just want to, can you talk a little bit, I was unable to attend the meeting you had with the Chairman of the Board of Finance, but just let the board know that those conversations have begun?
Yes, I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Zagrowski, and outlining kind of the $1.2 million, and saying that it's not going to get lower, potentially, if anything, it's going to get higher, but to signal that that would be a deficit. At this point, we'd probably just run the deficit, because it's just too early in the year to know where to take actual money from and make transfers from, so we'd run that deficit. Mr. Zagrowski, I have to say, was, listened carefully, and generally was willing to support the fact that we said, if you had COVID expenses, to come back to us, and so that's what we're doing, and he's very open to listening to that. One of the discussions was, are there opportunities just to update the various boards on what these things are, like what constitutes this number? And certainly, we would, through the board and myself, administration would go along to any meeting to inform the public about what those expenses are.
And just to round out that update, and then I'll open it up to questions, I also reached out to Chairman Zagrowski, very similar in our conversation, and also to Seth Morton on the RTM side, to kind of signal to them that this is where we were, and kind of work out processes, but I think there's a board discussion that needs to happen first. But they are all informed that this is an issue that as a town we will have to face, and so, as that dialogue progresses, based on what we decide as a board, I will keep everyone up to date. So, I will open up now to questions or comments on the school reopening plan. Mr. Burke?
First, this is a significant and amazing work product. It's detailed, and it also reflects the idea of flexibility and our educational values, so I know many, many men and women hours went into it. So, thank you for getting us this document. In terms of timing and process, do we have an idea as to when we need to make a determination as to whether we're going to go with the full attendance or the hybrid? Just to kind of get an idea of the road ahead.
Okay. I should have said before, and I apologize, I have some of my colleagues around the table, and certainly people who are listening on the screen, this is a work product from them. I would like to point out Michelle Lopez, who is Christopher's assistant, who did a fabulous job putting this together, and certainly the work from your office in particular, and my colleagues around the table. And Aleah Vamay, just pass right around to Alicia, who's just like, just been phenomenal in this work, this is their product, so I appreciate that. Mike, thank you for your question. So, I, right, last week, we were looking at, everybody was looking at five days a week, and the governor said that was a misunderstanding. I can assure you that there are superintendents who communicated directly to the state and got a direct answer back that, no, there is no misunderstanding, you're doing five days a week. So, as of last week, that was the status of it. Until we get further direction, it just seems like, when everything has been said, that that's not going to be the model, right, five days a week, and we'll have some opportunity to decide what our model should be. I can share with you, because we've worked every- I can share with you, because we've worked every, basically every week, the superintendents in this area have been getting together, many of them are going to do the hybrid, many of them wanted to do the hybrid from the outset, and thought that that's the only way they could do it, so many of them are going in that direction. I think I'd like to see, Michael, just affirmatively what they gave us in writing, before I would say what the timeframe of that is, because again, I'm going to have to sort of work with our public officials, and also with the board a little bit, and honestly, with our teachers and other constituents around it.
I just want to make sure that we leave enough time for us to meet and consider exactly what it is we're going to do, and obviously, to the extent that it's a board decision informed by the administration, I want to be sure that we leave ourselves the ability to consider that question properly, but as of right now, as of this moment, we're in a, we're in a five-day plan.
Yeah, I don't believe that that's going to continue necessarily, but yes, that's the status, yes.
So I can tell you, from talking kind of with my counterparts in other districts, they're wrestling with the same thing. How do we really delve down deep into a plan and push where we need to push, or ask questions where we need to ask questions, because we don't know yet. There are some districts that are smaller that feel that five days is right for them. That's very rare in my conversations. Most are anticipating a hybrid plan that I've spoken to, although everyone who's speaking is saying, I have to get my board together, like this is my impression, but I don't know how my board feels. So that's that question that we really do need guidance on, and I will continue to push, that, okay, what exactly is the board's role here? Because if it's coming down to a vote for us, I think we do need the time to really understand the plan, and both our role and the operational role within it. So I will keep pushing for a clear answer on that. I think now is a great time, and every meeting, including calling probably more, again, I'll signal, I think we probably will need to call more. Ask as many questions as we can, and I know I am committed to leaving us as much time as I can to really make sure we do this correctly. And I just keep pushing the state, because I think everyone had the same understanding, I'm not sure it was a misunderstanding. Mrs. Stein?
I have a separate question, but on that point, everything I read from what the governor said yesterday, it sounded like, it was almost like an exception for certain districts, the five days, the no five days. So I just want to make sure we clarify that whatever Darien does, we're in the group, if we choose not to do the five day, that's okay.
So there is some, Mrs. Stein, there is some discussion there between the Commissioner and the Governor about, can we at least make it regional? I don't know if that ship has sailed or not, but it probably hasn't, but there's some discussion around that. I will say, though, that originally with the five days, we may have been a wee bit of a different position than the other districts. The state of Connecticut told me we could bring the kids back, right? They're epidemiologists, they're State Department of Public Health. Our public health official said, with what we're doing, you can do that, right? And that's the direction I took, given that. If that changes, I think then we have reason to consider other models, in my opinion. But that being said, I don't know if the metrics are showing that, but again, I'm not an epidemiologist, and so I take my guidance and my lead from those health professionals.
So, oh, sorry, just on that, and Katie, I'll let you go, but for the board's consideration as we do this, what I don't want to do, and Alicia, you can help us with this, but I don't want to put this Board of Education in the position of making medical decisions. What I'd like to know from the local health department or the state health department, what is the guidance, and we will make decisions inside of that guidance? I think that that's an important message to give, I'd love your opinions on that, but I don't want to sit here as one of nine pretending that I have medical knowledge that I don't have.
And that leads into my other question perfectly, which is, not only has the governor's plan changed, but as we saw, CDC changed some of their guidelines on quarantine, so my question is, what's going to guide us in the absence of, let's say, direct guidance from the state? Are we following, it seems like from your email, it's CDC, but that seems to be changing, so I'd just love to hear what we're using, because we are not medical professionals in terms of guiding us on how to handle this.
So, so.
Yes, please.
So Thursday night, after we had redone some of our pieces for this, the CDC came out with some new guidance on when to exclude, how long to exclude, and things like that. So we will be, I've already been talking with Dr. Keneffek and with David Knopf at the Health Department about changing that, so that, and that will be communicated soon, like how we plan to do, how we plan to do it in Darien, knowing that in two weeks, that could change again, so we're just trying to keep everybody as informed as possible about different changes that go on. And I think that the decision to return to school is a full, everyone come back full five days versus a hybrid plan will really be based on the local area's rate of positive tests and infection, which, you know, I think we have to be planning for all the scenarios, because we just don't know what it's going to look like in a month from now. You know, a month ago, the numbers in Darien were really low, like maybe not even a case over a couple of weeks, and we've seen in the past two weeks that that has changed a little bit across the town and in the area. So taking that into consideration in conjunction with what's happening in other areas, and they've changed all the travel restrictions, you know, today, I think they added three more states. So all those things will impact how our area continues to perform as far as remaining either disease-free, or if it increases. So that will determine where we go from here and that. Those decisions, I won't be making that decision on my own, that's for sure. So we'll be, you know, looking to the state for guidance, and the local health department, and Dr. Keneffek, and what other school districts are planning on doing to keep all kids safe, because we know that they aren't, even though they're here in Darien, they're also playing on teams with kids, or, you know, involved in other activities with kids across Fairfield County and other areas, so that impacts our cohorts here.
Okay. Mrs. Ritchie?
Thanks. Katie pretty much addressed my question. My concern is really focused on what is going to be the criteria, and who is determining that criteria? And ultimately, who will be making, is it the board that's making that decision? And if we are making that decision, what is the criteria that we will be using when deciding, are we hybrid, are we in school? And that's it. Thanks.
So I think part of the answer to that question is, we'll need medical criteria, we'll need some state guidance, and then there is some criteria we as a board may determine. And part of that, and that was a question posed to Dr. Cardona today, is, you know, we need that sooner than later, because school is upon us. And he said he would go back and get answers. I think that's probably continued consultation with local health departments about medical opinions and safeties, because I think this is about reopening, this is about what would determine if we need to close or if we don't. What does living during a pandemic look like versus reacting to the pandemic? So I think, I think those are some of the things which at one point were being handled at the state level, and in some ways still should, but sounds like we're going to have more local control over, so we may need to develop some of those questions to put out to our experts and get some answers back. Mr. Danine?
I think just following up on those questions, maybe it could even be a one-page, or I think sometimes a lot of people are visual, but you've got the CDC, you've got the local health department, you've got the governor, like maybe some outline as to Katie's questions and Deb's questions, like we're getting this guidance from the CDC, and that's how we're looking at it, and we're working with the local health officials, getting their guidance about local cases, coordinating that with other local health officials in our district, and then here's what's coming in, and here's what we're reacting to from the state. I mean, we get guidance from the CDC, we get guidance from the state, but how do you, how do you put it all together, and how do you look at it, and who looks at it?
I'll answer it, we can do that.
But I mean, I think a lot of questions come up from, like, people are listening to the CDC on one station, they're listening to someone else on another station, they're getting information from all over the place, but I think what would help is, how are we coordinating all that information, and looking at it on a regular basis? And that CDC is going to guide us on these points, the local health department's going to guide us on these points, the state is going to guide us on these points.
To this point, we have been taking the guidance from the state report of how to return to school, because in there, it tells you when to consult with local health officials to consider the guidance of CDC and that type of stuff. It gives you a wee idea of how to triangulate. The problem is, now I've just thrown the playbook out the window. I actually, if you don't mind me a pen, but I think it's ridiculous what they're doing. You submit a report one day, and within the space of not even 12 hours really, the whole game has been changed. I just think it's, to put districts in this position around student health issues, I just think it's unconscionable. The State Department of Public Health has yet to take a position on stuff and give us guidance, and they were the ones who were to actually tell us how to get from one level to another level, or how to go from one to another, we still don't have anything. But with that being said, we'll do what we have to do as we always do.
I appreciate you saying that, I think it's important that you said that at this meeting. I would just, a follow-up question, Tara, that, just with respect to Mrs. Delancey's comments, and working with her, just high level, there were some concerns and comments there that she brought forward that play into, how do we do this? How do we open five days a week? So just high level, how your conversation and working sessions over their concerns are going?
So again, this is a pandemic health crisis, and staff, one of the things over the last month or so for teachers, teacher profession in general, I mean, teachers were generally looked at as heroes, and now, they're in the middle of this discourse about coming back, and people go on, well, they're not coming back because teachers don't want to come back. Well, teachers want to be safe too, with their families, and so on and so forth, so that's our responsibility to do that. We had a short window to do this, we had recommendations from that task force, some of which are included, some of which are not included. We also had a very tight timeline between when the report, the guideline from the state was issued, and when we actually had to get the report in. So there are certain things in there that I understand not all constituents, parents, and even teachers might support, like the direct live into the classroom. We can have ongoing discussions about variations of that or otherwise, or what it might look like, but that was, that was something that's in the report that teachers understandably have concerns about. And I do think that there are, there are topics in there that just continue to need to be fleshed out, whether it's, how do we do that, some of the logistics of it, and other topics. So we just have to continue to have good coordination and communication and collaboration around these issues, but there's still going to be issues that we're not all are going to agree on, and we just have to understand that. But I appreciate your question in terms of continuing the discourse.
So picking up off of that, Dr. Ali, can you talk a little bit about our commitment to keep teachers safe as well? I mean, I think we, I think we are committed as a board, and I wouldn't want the perception out there that we're not interested in, we're only interested in keeping our students safe, but can you talk a little bit about our commitment to teaching, keeping staff safe as well?
So, I mean, any of the communication I've sent out has always talked about the health and welfare of the students and the staff, and keeping them safe, and we've had numerous conversations about trying to take extra steps and precautions. Some of them are similar to the students in terms of face masks and providing additional resources to do that. Air quality is an area that continues to get discussion both across the state, locally and so on. Mike has taken the steps to, and has continued to take the steps, to actually address the air quality as much as we possibly can. There are some things that we're not going to be able to do. I always take the lens of what's reasonable, right, on any sort of particular topic. And if we can do something, we're going to try and do it, and I know Darien would be able to support those things. So Michael has taken steps to actually look into that air quality through independent companies and so on. I won't steal his thunder, because he's going to talk a little bit later. There's Plexiglas for, certain areas have been moved so that teachers have bigger spaces, whether it's a faculty room or otherwise. Certain areas where they actually work together, there's a lot of, there's a lot of big areas in high schools and different places where they actually sure, desk space and so on and so forth. They too will have Plexiglas in those particular areas, where adhering to the distance that the children are before them, and we'll also like, we'll also like, listen to any observations and respond to things as they come up, in terms of health and safety. I don't know if I've left anything out there, but you can certainly mention any of my staff here in front of me.
I think others need to keep in mind, I know we're talking about, you know, the three feet between desks. Actually allows for more space between students, like nose to nose, so that it's a little bit helpful, and we are doing things for the staff. You know, we've ordered not only masks, but we've ordered face shields for every staff member, you know, and trying to incorporate all the mitigating strategies that we can to keep them as safe as possible if we go back to a full five-day, everyone in the building, you know, return to school plan. So having not ever been through a pandemic before, we're trying to take all the recommendations and implement as many of them as possible to keep, to keep everyone safe, students and the staff.
Mrs. Ritchie, and then Mr. Danine?
Thank you. So that brings you to my question, which is about the notification plan and protocol, which sounds like it's going to be something that takes up a lot of time, of a lot of people. So I'd love you to maybe just discuss that a little bit, if you're confident, the number of people that you will have on staff to do the necessary assessment of students, contact tracing. And then the other question I had was, is, are people certified in contact tracing? I understand there's the Association of State and Territorial Health Officials, there's a certification that you can receive, so I'm wondering if the staff has that, and if so, who and how many members? Thank you.
I'm guessing no, but I'm going to defer that to Alicia.
We haven't had the school nurses trained for the contact tracing. Other school districts have, because their nurses are employed through the public health department, whereas our nurses are Board of Ed employees. But I have been talking with David Knopf at the local health department, and we've talked about how that contact tracing might look. I think that our nurses in the buildings will be more responsible under their, under the direction of the health department, of contacting in-school contacts, whereas they will be doing the out-of-school contact tracing. You had another part to your question.
Alicia, can you just clarify that? The public health department will be doing the out-of-school?
Right, so the, so the public health departments across the state are, and the state health department are the bodies that do contact tracing. So at this point, because of the level of nurses in the health department here, you only have in Darien, one, one public health nurse who works 10 hours a week, and then you have, this summer, they've hired somebody else who actually will be one of our school nurses, starting in September. She's been doing the other contact tracing, and really been doing quite a bit of that lately. And so I feel like we have this, the staff know-how, she can help train us, but we can also do the state training as well, if that is what is determined that our nurses need to be doing. So the state health department will also have people that will be following up on those results, because it's a mandated reporting. So they will have people who will follow up on those results, and then we will assist where we can and where it's appropriate. So if the training is necessary, our nurses will be trained to do contact tracing, and as far as personnel is concerned, in each of the schools, we're planning on having two people in each office at least. So at the high school and middle school level, we already have three, three nurses that are there in each of those schools, and in one of the elementary schools, we have two, and then at the other, we only have one. So we're looking at having an additional staff member in those four schools, so that there will be enough people available to do phone calling and contacting people, and, you know, participating where we can for contact tracing.
Okay. Mr. Danine?
So just in line with that, I think in looking at the staffing anticipated costs here, between the LPNs, Mike, the custodial staff, the teachers, how do we feel about the ability to hire these folks? I mean, it's basically August, so are we there yet? Are we working on it? Do you feel good about the hiring that we need to do?
So Alicia feels pretty good about the LPNs, we're just finishing up our negotiations with the Nurses Union, working out a few things about how the two groups would interact. You know, the teachers, the closer it gets to You know, the teachers, the closer it gets to school, obviously it's going to be an issue. But the elementary, for any added sections, the elementary principals have already started to screen in anticipation of additional sections. High school, should people not return, is always more problematic because of the certification issues. But we're trying to get in touch with people and have them contact us as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Mr. Sini.
So thanks. The plan, the reopening plan was developed by the administration. Board had some input, but I see it going forward from the execution now. Board's going to be more involved and we're going to have to weigh in on budgeting any policy issues. Perhaps, and I'm kind of reading through the lines here, perhaps even in the decision or at least actively giving you input on the decision on how to run the schools. Is that the way you see it going forward or we see it going forward as a board?
I would say perhaps, yes, perhaps. But certainly would need the board's perspective and input into it at some level.
I'm sorry?
It's a local decision, so I would expect the board to have input at some level, yes.
And then, you know, given the guidelines that you've seen already, and I know the state, one of the guidelines was you must start with five days in school. But now that it's up to our, our local control, if you will, given what you've seen now and the guidelines, is it suitable to go back for five days?
My own opinion?
Yeah.
My own opinion, honestly? If we could get our, if we get our staff comfortable. Now, I'm not an epidemiologist, okay?
I understand.
But my preparation, what, I don't see things have changed in all honesty since last week. But I'm open to, for people to tell me whether that is the case or not. I personally would bring them back. That would be my personal recommendation at this point. That's what we have planned for. I don't think anything has changed unless the health professionals tell me it has changed significantly. And if we can get our staff comfortable, like they're worried, I understand that, and naturally so. If we can get them in a comfortable place too. But I'm not so sure anything has changed from their perspectives either in some ways. They still have the same worries, concerns, anxiousness that is understandable. So if you're asking me, I would, that's what I would do.
And just to be clear, from what I've heard, the governor's communication or shifts or miscommunication, however, or misunderstandings or, that wasn't based on any scientific data or anything. That was more of a policy decision? Is that, there hasn't been any new guidelines or have there been any new guidelines over the last three days from a health perspective?
The only answer that I heard today on that, so I don't know, you know, if it's official. The only answer I heard today on that was, they always saw this as fluid. They understand districts are different, children's needs are different, families' needs are different, communities' needs are different. And so where they are in this moment of time, they thought that that was the understood guidance. It's a non-satisfying answer. I'm just repeating what I heard.
You're certainly not to blame for that answer either. You know, I think it's incumbent of us as our community representatives, if you will, to be involved in this local decision, if I may. I think it's going to be a very tough decision, a very fluid decision, if you will. And I don't want to, again, this document, the plan is awesome and the amount of work I can't imagine that went into it. But I think at this point, we're going to have to take a more active role kind of in this decision than we've, we have thus far. And that's not a criticism, I just think it's, we've been left with this from the state.
No, so I think what we need to look at is there was a time where the state was saying, you must open five days a week, including schools who put in plans that said, we are not going to do that. And the state said, no, I told you, you're open five days, go back to the drawing board. So the district operated at that point under that understanding, which is really day-to-day, how are you going to, but your school's going to open. The decision to open or close schools rests with the Board of Education. If what they are now saying, my understanding, although I'm going to check with the health professionals and legal counsel, is that local boards of eds open and close schools. If, if that decision has now been put back locally, I agree with you that we have to, we are going to have to make a decision, which then begs the question, which I think we're all grappling with, is exactly what Dr. said. Adley said, what has changed and how do we measure change? Because there will be a change tomorrow and there'll be a change the next day. How do we know that it's momentous enough to change children's experiences in school and our staff's experience in school and our family's experience living their lives? So part of the challenge is defining what is that change and what's that criteria? But I would agree that I think the nine of us are going to have to come together a lot more now to really understand those criteria and what change means and what it doesn't mean. That's me opining, sorry.
No, the lines are certainly great here. And I think we all realize that and we're going to have to work together in kind of determining how great they are.
Mr. Burke, and then I see Mr. Brown. I see you, Mrs. Ritchie, I will, I'm circling around to everybody. Mr. Burke.
Thank you. And I share obviously the thoughts and concerns about the direction we're going to take and how we are going to get there. With regard to the specific plan, one thing I, reading through, I had a question about was in reading about face coverings and indicating that students will be wearing masks unless contraindicated by documented medical provider. So what does that look like? I mean, obviously if it's a health risk for a child to wear a mask, I guess that's what contraindicated means. But then how does that affect the other children in terms of then there's one student who might not be wearing a mask and is that from a health perspective? Because as our chair pointed out, none of us are, are health professionals. How does it actually work? How does a contraindicated child who's not wearing a mask, how does that affect the potential health of the other children who are?
That's a good question. I would say that for a student who has a medical contraindication or they have a, you know, educational special need that precludes wearing a mask, that we might try some other precautions, whether they, we try, we see if they can tolerate wearing a face shield to help with the respiratory droplets from being spread. And then depending on, for a medical contraindication, would depend on maybe what the doctor has recommended as ways to help mitigate their, their needs as well as taking into consideration the students in the classroom. You know, they may, they may end up, when they're sitting at a desk and unable to wear a mask and in a classroom, maybe they're spaced a little bit further apart from other students to help with that. So we'll have to kind of take each of those situations on a case-by-case basis. I've heard from a few parents who have students who have difficulty with speech and language and they're very concerned about having mouths covered. So we have ordered some of the clear masks that are available for, for teachers to use so that students who need to be able to see mouths moving for their educational needs will be able to do that. And, and we can look at doing that for, for those students to have as well in those situations. So we are kind of looking at case-by-case basis, what might work for students. You know, some students that have, you know, medical issues that make them at higher risk for COVID, you know, they may choose to not attend school at this time. But we will do what we can if they do want to attend school to make it as safe as possible for them.
Mr. Brown.
Hi, thanks. Just following up on a couple of points that were made. You had mentioned a little bit earlier, I think in the opening, Tara, about the proposal that we sent out to the state, and I know Mr. Sini just talked on it. I just had a question generally in terms of process and how involved the board's able to get and if we're really in the right place through this process. And it just concerns me, some of the actions that some of the other towns took and how involved those boards were and we were hands-off. And I mean, on some level, I feel a little bad taking credit for that, that great work that the superintendent's team put together with my name. And I didn't do anything, I just read it when it was done. So, I mean, I, I need to have a sense of where that balance is. And as a specific instance of that, I'm looking at the statute as we're discussing about additional funds. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but where there's a situation, the chairman shall notice by the Board of Finance, we did that. And then we shall submit a request for additional funds in the same manner as provided by the boards. And then there's some other language in there. So I could read that as, we're going back to our standard procedure where the board has to take action. The board can go line by line. And then that goes out to the Board of Finance for action? I'm not really sure. I mean, I read this, I would defer to Tom Mooney for a little bit of guidance. But, you know, I could easily read this that if we're going to have additional appropriations, it's the usual budget process we would take. I also read that there's no supplemental expenditures can be made without approval for going over. So I know we had a discussion about running a deficit, that may be okay. But now I'm reading this, I'm wondering, how does that actually work in practice? And are we, you know, prepared to take the time and go through the formal budget process? Which, you know, reading this seems to indicate is what we have to do to get additional funds for the Board of Finance.
So I can take some of this and Dr. Adley, feel free to take some as well. The, as Mr. Mooney advised us, the board had no action for a vote prior. Cabe Council also reiterated that some districts chose to take a vote. They felt that that was the right thing for their community. But again, it was reiterated today by Bob Raider at Cabe that there was no vote necessary or action needed to take by a Board of Education for a superintendent to file an operational plan with the state of Connecticut. I agree with Mr. Sini's assessment that at this point, given the change, that we probably need to get much more involved, and so I think that's appropriate. On the budgeting side, Darian has run a deficit at least once before. In the last 15 years, we're, we're following that same process, which has been our local process. It would be for a special appropriation first, that would go to the Board of Finance. I imagine, and I think we all have to have this conversation, that the best thing, or let me put it this way, a wise thing for us to consider would be if we had to run a deficit, we would do that at least in this initial setup so that any savings we might realize, we would recoup before going to the town and the taxpayers for asking more money. So that by the time we actually go, as long as we are keeping the Board of Finance up to date regularly and we can discuss with them whether that's monthly or, you know, if they want to meet more often or we want to go bimonthly, you know, I think we have to come to a mutual understanding there to keep them fully informed of where we are and why we're there and if they have any red flags, to raise it. But we are following the process of which Darian has followed when they've done this before. I think, I could have my months off wrong, but they did, Darian did exactly that. The Board of Education identified a deficit, they went to the Board of Finance, they kept them up to date. By the time they actually went for a full true-up, they had actually closed their deficit from other found savings. So I would think the taxpayers would want us to do exactly that. Dr. Adley, do you want to talk anything about?
I think you've.
I haven't run a deficit.
I think, I think you've summarized it pretty well. For now, you'd be running a deficit in the various line items, whether it's facilities, maintenance, technology, or whatever it happens to be. And with the understanding that legally we can't close out with a negative balance and long as the discussions have ensued with the various boards as to the predicament we're in. And generally speaking, that boards would, and Boards of Finance would probably wait to say, well, what can you make up by the end of the year, right? And then relatively make a hole thereafter, essentially. And or if you have anything else, Richard, but that's my experience.
So it's, it would be a projected deficit. So again, we don't spend all our money all at once. So we would project the deficit out and typically if you have to ask for supplemental appropriation, as you mentioned, you would certainly try to identify items within your budget that you could recommend as a transfer to kind of offset some of those.
Rich, can you just speak into your microphone so the whole?
And then you would ask for that, that dollar amount after whatever identified savings that you've accrued.
Does that answer your question, Dave?
It did answer the question on the deficit, thank you. And I guess it's just the process for submitting a request for additional funds. The timing on that, I understand, you know, maybe before or after we finalize the number or when we're prepared to go as part of a discussion. The question is, are we going to follow our traditional annual appropriation process or not? And I read this as it could be, but I don't know definitively. And I would refer to Tom to probably is more informed on how to answer that question. But certainly it looks like that's what it says, but there may be a more nuanced answer.
Yeah, we have our annual appropriation. It would be a special appropriation for any funds at the next point.
It does, but this language says for a supplemental, it's in the funds in the same manner as provided boards or agencies. So it's the same manner.
Yep, that we would go to the Board of Finance.
Or does that mean the same manner as we do every year for the annual? And I don't know.
Yeah, I can go through the statute with you. I think the, the spirit of that is the same manner in that we would come up with budgets and line items. We would go to the Board of Finance, the Board of Finance would decide how they want to pay that. We would go to the RTM. Mrs. Ritchie, we may go to the RTM, I'm assuming at this number.
Thank you. So as far as a special appropriation, I think, I think there's going to be cost savings that are realized over time because at this point, there's so much uncertainty. We do know, we don't know what school's going to be look like. We don't know what extracurriculars are going to run. So at this point, I think it's premature to go to the Board of Finance with any request for a special appropriation because I really don't think school is going to look remotely like it usually does in the fall. So that's my little comment on that. And the other thing with all the uncertainty, the safety, safety's got to be the number one thing that we consider. I do think the board needs to be more involved and hopefully we'll get more guidance on that soon. I have heard of other boards voting and other states, they are responsible for the decision-making when it comes to the reopening plans. The one thing I did want to mention was communication. I think communication going forward is essential and I think frequent, open dialogue with parents. We're not going to see traditional parent meetings at the schools like we usually do where parents can come and Dr. Adley is there and can answer questions. So I really think we need to think outside of the box, what kind of communication we're going to have with parents. I would love to see an evening Zoom meeting where parents, it's almost like a town meeting, so to speak, where parents can ask a question, whether it's live or through a chat, something like that. But I just think making sure that everyone is visible, we're out there to answer questions. And I'd love to hear what the administration has planned right now in terms of communicating with the parents and the community. Thank you.
So we had that, the parent focus groups, we had just, just over 30 or so parents who actually participated just like that. And up until this point, we have committed to the timeline that we communicated to parents along the way. We would communicate on a certain date, we'd communicate on the 24th of July. So at least to give people a good sense of like, what is that communication process? Part of the recommendation coming from the reopening task force was to create a hub on the website that would, would serve as that. And so we're in the process of actually doing that. I think we would probably regenerate some of these ideas and some of these processes based on what we find out from the latest sort of sense, what's probably going to come tomorrow or the next day in writing, and then regroup again in terms of some processes to get us through the next month.
So Dr. Adley, would you maybe consider, at least maybe at each level? I don't know how you manage the Zoom numbers. Once we come up with a plan, meeting with parents to kind of hear their questions on the day-to-day?
Yes, we could, we could certainly be open to that.
Panel discussion of the key decision-makers.
Yeah.
Now, it would also just sort of depend, like, we'd have to be very clear what the purpose is. Is this a decision-making or what is it, or in light of the plan or otherwise? That's all.
Yeah. I thought I saw that here. Mrs. McCammon, and then Benus, I'll come over to you.
Thank you. Two comments. I'll speak slowly, I think my connection is poor.
Jill, can you speak closer to your computer? We're having trouble hearing you.
Yes, I'll try. Number one, I'd like to confirm or reiterate my support for Ms. Ritchie and several other board members' points about communication and how critical I think that is at this stage, whether it's town halls, letters, et cetera. Thank you for what's already been done. I look forward to what's being done going forward. To the point earlier about kids who have special considerations, whether it's because they have health needs and need to figure out how to get their desks cleaned a little better or whether they need clear masks for their teachers, I'd ask that our communications be clear about who to talk to. If you have questions that may not be average questions, some of these may fall outside of our traditional processes. And so parents may need more support knowing who to go and talk to for questions about how to interact with the school environment. I have some questions on a separate topic about, sorry, tired. Some questions about how we are thinking about the, again, back to the, the relationship between the budgeting and operational decisions. and operational decisions. If we, we want to set up the environment to go back if we can, if that's what's healthy for everybody, students, staff, et cetera, but let's say we can't, how are we thinking about things like hiring extra teachers or extra staff or equipment if we decide we're not going back for some period of time? What, just what's the, the operational thinking, Dr. Adley?
Dr. Adley?
Respectfully, I'm not, I mean, I wouldn't say that very respectfully. At this point, I have to get in place what we need to get in place and try to address, Jill, the, the process and the politics and the processes we got to go through to make that very, very clear. I guess I'm taking the, I guess that was a wee bit flippant. I guess I'm taking the strategy of that collectively, the school community and the town community will do what's right, what we need to do to actually get us through the year, knowing that we can't run a deficit. So ultimately, that, that legislation is sort of like, is always in place, and we have to come to terms. And I just have a confidence at this point, given we're in a pandemic health crisis, that we'll come together and do that. The finer details of that will continue to be worked out, but I'm just, I'm letting a wee bit of a bet that we will, we will be able to come together as various boards and do what's right for kids and do what's right in this pandemic. I mean, I, I, right now, I'm not making plans for, we're not doing professional development to save a teacher here or to offset something. At this point, minimally, it's just too early in that process to do that. At least that's, that would be my thought process at this point.
Mr. Maroni?
Yes, thank you. So, so I would like to echo my colleagues and thank you for the, the work that's done. This is a great work product. Having said that, I think part of our work product in this room, in the Board of Education, is we should model the behavior that we're expecting our staff and students to do, and that is wear a mask at all times inside, whether we can socially distance or not. I think we should be wearing a mask. We should be modeling the behavior that we're expecting of our, of our staff and students to do. And a couple other points, I think Duke brought up the point of, you know, to me, I think we need a rubric on, on what it is to, to go to in-person learning, to go out of in-person learning and just try to set that up so, so the community and parents can understand what that is. As well as I think we need a date to determine what we're going to do as, you know, a drop-dead date of when we're going to decide what we're going to do as of September 3rd or August 27th or whatever day you want to determine. But there needs to be a date set that people understand this is where we're going to be as, you know, because it is fluid, but I think we have to have something put down, draw a line in the sand and say, this is our, our time that we're going to have a decision made. Now, maybe that is tonight, but I'm not sure. And then my last question, and this is a little granular, but a lot of this, a lot of this work is talking about going outside to have breaks, outside to do music, outside. Do we, and I don't see anything in here for facilities for tents. What are we going to do if it rains?
Well, we, first of all, we wouldn't be able to go outside. There is a discussion that's, that's, there is a discussion that, and we try to use the larger, there's the larger group settings that we have. There is a discussion, even though it's not in there by tents, there is an ongoing discussion about the use of tents. I did say here at the last time, I'm very concerned about the health and safety of the use of tents, but there is a discussion that's ongoing about that. But if it rains, we can't be outside.
So I think Mr. Maroni, respectfully, on masks, if any member has a concern that we are not distanced enough at this point, at, at the six feet, they can let us know. In fact, one member asked before the meeting that exact question, and you were here for that question. So I don't think the other board members heard your concern at that time, but we are now hearing it on camera. We can, we can discuss that if we feel we're not.
I would, on page 21, under face coverings, it said face covering should be worn at all times, especially when physical distancing is not feasible. So we're-
Distanced.
Distanced. So I would assume that we're within our own guidelines.
I read, all students and staff are required to mask at all times as feasible.
Yes. So it's, it's interesting that the comments now on camera, when the comment was asked off-camera, but if any member's uncomfortable or would like the rest of the members for their safety to wear their mask, I'm sure we're all happy to put our masks on.
I am not uncomfortable. I'm just saying we should model the behavior that we're expecting of, of our students and staff. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
One other question?
Sure. Mr. Burke, and then we'll come back to you.
Just a, a couple of points. I, I think Mr. Maroni has an interesting point in terms of when we're actually back in school and doing things to prepare the students for a hybrid environment, all of a sudden, perhaps as part of their learning environment, they can be trained in terms of, almost like a fire drill in terms of what happens if tomorrow we're closing the schools and this is how it's going to proceed, especially for the younger students who haven't had the experience of, of e-learning. With regard to classes outside, and I, I saw that, and I, I assume that we're intelligent enough to come in out of the rain. What I wonder, though, is if we're going to be outside, have we thought about security? Have we talked to the police? If we're going to have outside classes, are we going to have a couple of squad cars somewhere close to make sure that the students are so, are secure? And then the last thing is, we were talking about these monies, and I know it may be foolhardy to believe in leadership in Washington, but I hear about billions of dollars being made available for school reopening, and maybe a place like Darian would never be eligible for that kind of help, but perhaps someone in the administration can be looking into, applying to whatever grants along those lines may become available.
So certainly the, the safety and security is a, is a huge thing, and under certain configurations that we have, it will be probably slightly different than it, than it has been. And certainly the police will be part of that discussion in terms of what does it look like, feel like, under a different scenario now? And how do we ensure the safety of the kids? Because you, you can hear at the high school, there's, they're going to go out at different ends of the buildings and this type of thing. So there's, there's different aspects that need to be addressed, but it doesn't say it in there, but that will be addressed with the local police force and emergency management.
Mr. Maroni?
Yeah, another question I have is on social and emotional learning and well-being. And again, there's nothing in here about hiring more social workers, psychologists, or any kind of mental health professionals. And I think with, with all the, for lack of a word, turmoil and, and lack of a, a structure that is, you know, no longer there, personally, I find as an adult, and I think children as well, thrive on structure. And not having that structure is going to create a lot of imbalance and a lot of questionings. And what are we doing to address that?
Chris, do you want to, would you mind, this, the, so, so, school psychologists are very much a part of that social-emotional setup.
Yeah, so we've also had some people working on developing a plan of what's the instructional side of that, and we're planning on bringing some teachers together to look at different aspects, one of them being social-emotional learning, one of them's curriculum, and one of them's looking at SRBI, which will also look at the side of the pyramid that addresses social-emotional learning, because there's a huge instructional component to this. And we've dedicated time and built it into schedules from, at every level, to make sure that we have explicit expectations for certain conversations to be had. And also is required in the state, the current state guidelines is to be able to identify any students that may have experienced trauma that haven't experienced it before. And so that does require training for our teachers. So we've been looking at it on the instructional side of what are we going to do to guarantee that all students have opportunities for those conversations? And until that happens, I would say the need for additional people to provide those supports hasn't been determined unless through those lessons we see something else, if that makes sense.
Other questions? Mr. Danine?
Can you, can you just speak into the mic? With Mr. Burke's conversation about security, and you have a lot in here about transportation and busing, but I would think there may be more students walking to school, especially in the nice weather. So I would ask, we think about, are there additional crossing guards that are needed? Are there additional campus monitors that are needed to assist with perhaps an increase in volume of kids walking to our schools, especially in the nice weather? And, you know, we all know, we had the conversation around those construction sites in town, and while the easy solution there is to, you know, think about busing or adding a busing, adding a bus, I think that might even have more of an impact with more people walking.
So just as a quick update, quickly at OPC, Mr. Alvani and I talked a little bit about that. He has been nothing but helpful and willing to help in terms of like, planning and letting us know schedules of things. He and I traded emails, we need to follow up, but I would just like to say P&amp;Z has been nothing but cooperative in kind of providing information to kind of help assist that in terms of the piece of communication, I think several members have talked about. So as we go down that route a little bit more, and, and I'm so appreciative of his help, and get that information to the administration, that can be part of any messaging, at least, at least in terms of current construction that they know about. Any other questions?
I got, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Mr. Seeny?
Just one detailed question around the extracurriculars, Dr. Adley.
Yeah.
You know, in one case, we're having some extracurriculars remotely, and then I think we're relying on the CICE for athletics, and that, clearly not playing athletics remotely. Just if you could give us a thought on the equity aspect of that.
So I appreciate the question, and certainly the equity part of that comes into play. When we look at the extracurricular, there was the thought process that the athletics, based on CICE, going ahead with at least some version of this, whether it's a very small version or otherwise, I mean, you have to be outside to do it for the most part. These other activities for the kids, that some of the clubs and activities can coexist in any of the models that we do, whether we're in school, whether we're in a hybrid, or whether we're completely out of a hybrid. Near, I think nearly all of them could, could coexist in, in those models. So we, at least we felt we could provide the opportunity for the students and that that at least would satisfy that criteria. Thank you.
Any other board questions? Mrs. McCammon?
Dr. Adley, a question about the school calendar. One of my understandings in an early press conference about the thinking about re-entry to the school for students, should that occur, was a significant time would be needed to teach students to interact in the new environment with different protocols, and that some of looking at the school year differently was specifically to train students to this new environment. Can you talk about that for, the vision for Darian for that, and talk about how that impacts the school calendar, please?
Well, in order, in order to prepare the students, we got to prepare the, our staff first of all, so that's the main priority of that scenario. And then the first two days of school, we have planned as shortened days for that purpose also, to transition the students back in to schools with protocols and processes. And there are going to be more protocols, processes, things that students have to get used to, and that will be built, built in both front-loading that with education with parents and asking them to help us out with that in terms of educationally, both for themselves and for their, for their children, and also for, with the staff, with the students. Because it'd be a big part of that will be built into the actual schedule of, of what we're doing, how we're doing it, why we're doing it, and how we all have to behave together.
Other board questions? So what I would like to do, Dr. Adley, if it's possible, I think you said you expected, big word, and I understand that's an expectation at this point, to have guidance from the state, but what I'd like to do is set, is within this week, set another board meeting for early August, because I do think there'll be work for us to do. Hopefully, we'll have more information at the state, but even in the absence of that, that might kick into gear, what we might decide we need to do or not. So hopefully, we'll have guidance. In the absence of guidance, we'll need to determine kind of what our local guidance is. But let's give Dr. Adley a day or two, since the announcement was 4:00 PM on, you know, yesterday, to hopefully get something from the state. But certainly, we'll talk, and one of us will get back to the board about picking a meeting date, so we can have as many members as feel comfortable in person with or without your masks on, and make, and make some decisions going forward. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, great. What we do need to do is consider whether or not, and we want to approve the amended calendar now. The state has taken action on that it will, it will acquire only 177 days. I think Dr. Adley has spoken that he feels these PD days in the front of the calendar are important. I would be willing to take action tonight rather than pushing this out, but I'm open to board consideration or comment.
And to Mr. Maroni's point of it, I think the earlier we tell our, our parents and constituents something, the better off we're all, we're going to be.
Like the start day of school.
Did I make the motion to amend the agenda?
A motion to amend the agenda, yes, a second. Mr. Burke, amend the agenda to what? I'm sorry, Mr. Seeny. Make it a possible action item? Amend item 7B to a possible action item, so moved by Mr. Seeny, seconded by Mr. Burke, all in favor. Mrs., that is unanimous. And then could we entertain a motion to approve the school calendar with amended start dates as the administration has provided? Mr. Danine and Mr. Burke, all in favor. I assume there was no discussion, I'm sorry, but that is unanimous. All right, so thank you.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tyra. I just wanted to ask Dr. Adley real quick, just with using those, front-loading those PD days, I want to just be certain, I wanted to, I tried to sneak this in earlier, but you didn't see my hand. I just want to be certain that he feels confident that he won't need any other days, any other time, at any point during all this.
Oh, that's a, that's a big disclaimer, that is.
No.
So, but with that being said, should, should the board decide to support some of the models that we have in a sense of, there is a shortened day on a Friday, you got the, the professional development days remain throughout the year. So, you know, unless circumstances change so dramatically, but this construct, I think, will, will work for us, to be honest with you.
Okay. Everyone's comfortable? That vote's still unanimous vote. I want to consider that a follow-up question. So a first reading and discussion on the proposed 2020-21 district goals, Dr. Adley.
So I just wanted to take a few moments and engage the board in this discussion. We're doing the strategic planning, the strategic planning. With the goals, I think, you know, I think there'll be more discussion around the goals with the board and making sure that they, you have ownership of those goals and they're what you want to, want to be. They are probably going to be a bit more higher level. So I'm thinking there are going to be a couple of months out before we go back and forward a little bit. And just given the year that we're facing, the unprecedented year, typically, the board has sort of departmental goals per se. They're not necessarily going away, because our department will have goals that they'll work with me with and will work together on, and so they're not sort of going away. But, but I'm just asking for consideration of a transition, given you're probably going to go to different sorts of goals in the future. What might get us there, given the times with, which we're living at the moment? And I just, I, I took sort of the opportunity just to share a couple. I'm not saying they're perfect for you. If you wanted to, for me to flush these out a wee bit more with objectives and time, fine, that's okay. But I'm also trying to be a wee bit more pragmatic here as well. So I'll just cut the chase with just a couple of suggestions, only because sort of the public in here. To support student learning during the pandemic health crisis, complete, yes, let's complete this strategic planning process, advance the district's facility projects that we have in the harbor at the moment, and complete the bus transportation review. When I say complete the review, I don't mean just a study, I mean, complete the whole process of decision-making, so on, so forth. So those are a couple that I think are before us. I also don't want to like articulate 25 different goals when we know what the priority's going to be this year on, on this sort of supporting the kids through this learning process. But anyway, I'll leave it at that, and I just wanted to open that up for discussion with the board.
Board comments or questions? Mrs. Stein?
I'm, I'm okay with it, with the caveat that I think it would be helpful as it aligns with our agenda, maybe have bullets under it of things that are on the docket, like technology-
Oh, yes.
Without timelines and dates, not because, who knows? But I do think just to sort of give a little more depth to each area, so everyone knows what we're talking about, and I, you know, that would be helpful.
Yes, and that would be my intent. If the board thought there's attraction, you would go, but the next meeting, I would flush some of those out.
I think it's fine, given the situation. I think it's fine, given the situation we're in right now.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Dunne?
I think the only thing I would think through a little more, because I think it's important, and I think the conversation about how we kept everything moving forward through all of this, is maybe a little more insight on all the good work and hard work that's being done on curriculum that continues. I think that's important to just continue to highlight.
Mrs. McCammon?
I didn't hear what, that didn't agree at all. Do you mind repeating?
Jill, you're garbled?
We couldn't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I said I agree with this overall. What I'd like to see is maybe an addition in just the, an ongoing update of all the important and hard work that's being done around curriculum. I think we need to keep the focus on that, like was discussed during the strategic committee update. We've continued to work through all of this, so let's make sure curriculum gets the highlight of all the hard work that's being done on that.
Okay, Jill, I think you had more, right, or no? Do you want to try again?
Sure, I'll try. Thank you, Duke, first, and then, I just, I agree with going to a much shorter, tighter version of goal planning, so thank you, Alan, for thinking about that. I do look forward to seeing the strategic plan and seeing more detail come from that, also using that to help inform our meeting planning in addition to the work of the district, with the caveat that we've all had all along that this is going to be a very different year. But I just want to express my support for being shorter and tighter in our goals this year, and continuing the strategic planning. Thank you.
Other board thoughts or comments?
I would just reiterate, I think what we, I think it's, we've been saying for a while, we need to get a little broader. We were getting a little too departmental, so I think this is a great first stab. But I think we need a little specifics underneath it, so we know how to evaluate where we were, what we did, did we hit certain milestones even? Even if they're broad categories, and I would agree with Mr. Dunne, given that curriculum and the board are so tied closely, that it's always probably a wise one to have as a goal, and especially in this changing moment, as curriculum's going to have to adapt. So this is only a first read. What I would say is, as you ponder it and understand Dr. Adley's mission and thinking on this, if you have thoughts, please send them in to Dr. Adley and I, and we'll get them out to the board, so that our next meeting, we can take action, should we so decide. Does that work for everybody on this? Any other questions? Okay. We'll move on to an update on the summer facility projects. Mr. Lynch?
Good evening. So it's a smaller list than in previous years, as the capital projects' budget was shortened up before the board was, before the budget was adopted. So by school, Hindley Elementary School, the big project, which is actually from last year, was replacing the roof in the original part of the building. We received our state approval in June, which made it too late to bid the project out for this summer. And once you have approval, you have 18 months to bid it out, so we're okay as far as the grant money being promised, et cetera. And so we're going to bid the project out this February, so we can do it next summer. Homeschool project, same, roof and skylight, it's the same thing. We got our approval in June, so it's going to follow the same path as Hindley. Ox Ridge, the only project is the, Duke already spoke about it tonight, the large construction project. Royal School, no project planned this year. Tokenique School, the project was replacing the fire alarm panel, and it is, purchase order's been cut, and the new panel is on order, and expected completion is August 21st. Middle School project, we had a project left over from last year, which was repairing damaged sections of the concrete walkway. We finished that in June. We have expansion of the security camera system. The preliminary plans are completed, and I sent a memo to Shelley Solmers over there at the middle school to get her safety committee together, so I can share those plans and adjust them, because, you know, they know better than I do where they have trouble spots and blind spots, et cetera. So we have to adjust the plan before we set out to do the work. At the high school, we replaced the front crosswalks, they were pretty badly deteriorated. We replaced them in May and first week of June. And rebuilding the tennis courts, the purchase order was sent to the company. Our original start date on their calendar was June of 2021. They called two weeks ago and said, we've had several cancellations, we can be there at the end of July. Talked to Chris Manfredonia, he was on board with it. Talked to the Recreation and Parks Department, because they run a camp there, they were able to move the cherry lawn. So we started work last week.
Great.
So we will be hopefully finished by November. The, replacing the Chevy Trailblazer, which was still in the bid, we couldn't find any delivery vans on the state contract, so we took local bids, and H&amp;L Chevrolet actually had the lowest price, and we took delivery of the van last week, and we're outfitting it with lettering and GPS system, et cetera, right now. So it should be back, it should be in service next week. Expand and upgrade the lockdown system, just with everything that's been going on, we just haven't been able to sit down with everybody and start the project. So we're hoping to get that started after school starts, and things are running somewhat smoothly, maybe not normally, but smoothly. And the other thing we've been working on is the HVAC system and the air quality for the school reopening. And so what we did was, we hired an outside private firm, according to what the state wanted done. They've been hired to certify the operation of all the ventilation equipment, and to make sure all classroom unit ventilators, HVAC, central systems, and exhaust fans are operating correctly. And then they will issue a report on this, that we have to have as a public record. All the units in the district have had all the filters replaced in accordance with the manufacturer's recommendations. And added this year with the commissioning, there's also been reprogramming. The state, Connecticut Department of Public Health is requiring a two-hour fresh air purge every morning before school opens, and then another two hour, another one-hour purge after the school day has ended, and that all exhaust fans in the building, which would be everything except for the kitchen hood, pretty much, you know, whether it's a storage room, a bathroom, the elevator pit, those exhaust fans have to run 24 hours, seven days a week, whereas before, they would work off of occupancy. So we're in the process of reprogramming them and making sure they're all working. And that's about it.
Board comments, questions? Mr. Burke?
This isn't a school project, but I noticed that there seems to be an immense amount of sewer work going on around homeschool, with pavings going on over the school property and the driveways, and apparatus around the school area. Are you aware of that project? Do you know if it's going to be completed before school starts? Is that school ready to open, even if those conditions remain as they are?
I am aware. I saw the people working out there, so I approached them, and they handed me one of those little bags they hang on your doorknob. I gave to Rich, I think I'm done with that, no. Basically, there's a bad water main that runs on Phillips Lane, and so they have tied into the fire hydrant on Hoyt's, in front of Homeschool, and run it around the corner into a fire hydrant down on Phillips Lane. And that way, they can have water and fire protection for Phillips Lane while they shut this water main off and replace the pipe permanently, instead of all these little patches they've been doing over the year. It is not the water main that feeds our school, and it's not the fire main that feeds our school. We're just having that hydrant is being tapped into by Aquarian, because it's the nearest one. The work will not be done by the time school starts. They expect it to be done by the end of September, beginning of October. And it's just, you know, we're, not much we can do about it. I did tell them that the blacktop they've put around the pipe is a little steep, and there was a smaller car that already bottomed out on it, and took a chunk of the blacktop out. And they said they'll, you know, be back to look at that before school starts, because I know several staff members drive small cars, and they're not very high off the ground. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Ritchie?
I'm sorry, thank you, Mike, for that update. You were a little choppy when you were talking about the HVAC assessment that is required for reopening. Has that been completed and is available, or is that something we're still waiting on?
It's still being done. I, it started last week. They did, they did this Tokenique School, they did Homes, they did the high school. They still owe me the middle school and the other buildings. So when it's done, I'll have the report. Just talking to my colleagues at the other neighboring school districts, this is the approach that all the school districts are taking. They're having a company come in, you know, like an ABS, or Colliers, or a firm like that, and having them come in, and they're actually running through the computer program that controls ventilation. And one guy runs through the program, while others go and observe all the equipment and check that the outside air dampers are opening full, and that the equipment is operating correctly. And then they'll issue a report. The Connecticut Department of Health, Public Health requires a report at the end of the process. So I expect that by the middle of August. We have to have that report before we open.
Board comments?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board questions?
Mike, being my most hopeful self, who, you know, would love if a school could open, I believe these purges will still be required throughout the year. So just something to think about, sometimes that high school is open late, and kids are working in it much later than people receive. So those purges, the building has to be empty when they occur?
They will be programmed to occur when the building empties.
Okay.
And I know that there's no firm and final decision yet on, you know, building occupancy. So say at an elementary school, there's Y basketball till 8:30, 9 o'clock, three or four nights a week. So I'll just schedule the purge for, say, 10 o'clock at night.
So as long as whatever schedule we're on, we're sure that our building's locked up and?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Lynch, for all the work you have managed to get done. Good news on the tennis courts, and some of the ones that haven't had a chance, we look forward to them moving forward.
Welcome.
We will move on to an update on enrollment for the, did I skip one? No, the 2021 school year. Mr. Rudel?
Sure. So total enrollment currently is 24 students, less than projected. The biggest change is in kindergarten, which is actually 24 students. We're at 320 students, which equates to 17 sections, which is two less than projected.
Ritchie, I'm not sure they can hear you, if you can speak right into it, sorry.
Sure. So as I said, currently, we are 24 students under projection, with kindergarten actually being 24 students under projection. So it is 17 sections against a budget of 19 sections. First grade is pretty much right in line at 346 students and 18 sections, which was budgeted. Second grade, 333 students with 16 sections, which meets budget. Third grade at 345 students, the budgeted sections were 17. However, there is a need for an additional section at Tokenique, and a recommendation for two additional sections due to social distancing at Hindley and Ox Ridge. Fourth grade at 374, 18 sections budgeted, 20 sections needed, and that is due to two additional sections, one at Homes and one at Royal due to social distancing needs. And then fifth grade is actually right at projection at 347, though it is 16 sections under budget. Middlesex is only five under, and the high school is actually one under projection. And again, overall, 24 students shy, which is primarily at kindergarten.
Board comments and questions? Mrs. Ritchie?
Thanks. I'm curious, have you heard of, have any students withdrawn from kindergarten? Because I am hearing a lot of discussion on social media that parents of kindergarten, incoming kindergarten students have decided for other alternative, that maybe that's just holding them back until first grade, or sending them next year to kindergarten, or looking at other smaller options for kindergarten. So have we seen any withdrawals, or just not meeting the projections?
We haven't seen that many withdrawals, but we certainly aren't seeing the enrollment that we thought we would see, with the exception of Ox Ridge. Ox Ridge is the one school, one elementary school that has exceeded projections. There's seven over, and actually 20 more students than compared to last year. But with the exception of Ox Ridge, kindergarten has been lagging behind everywhere.
Other board comments or questions? So what does the board think? I'm thinking about tracking our COVID expenses. Typically, we set sections tonight, and we set sections tonight to allow the administration to go out and hire. That's something I think we still need to talk about, or whether we want to give the superintendent, which we've done sometimes, the authority to hire and access budget control for this specific purpose, should he need in the coming month. But I'm looking at this report, and thank you, Rich, it's nothing to do with your report, because it gives us a fuller picture, but if we're looking to track COVID expenses, I'm wondering if we pull out those sections, or what you think about pulling out those sections that are COVID-related, because we're actually not over sections on straight enrollment. We are over sections based on COVID-related needs.
So we're actually even on section?
We're even, yeah.
So we're even, so without the COVID sections, we're four under? Yep.
Yes.
But with the four recommendations for additional teachers, we're even at 106.
Well, and so it may be semantics to our overall what we need, but it might be important to us from like an accounting perspective, and a budgetary perspective, do we want to understand those a little differently?
Yeah, so they are, they're actually listed in the COVID expenses under 1.2 million.
Okay, that was my fear.
So you've got Royal, Royal fourth grade, Hindley third, Homes fourth, Ox Ridge third at the moment, but they are actually listed under, I think, under one of those categories right there of staff. So we have actually done that, and I think we should continue to do that.
But that, oh, I was going to say, we were talking about savings, it's not a COVID savings. Reality is, we were running under budget on necessary sections, right? And now we're truing up because of COVID, so it should be accounted as a COVID-related expense, but in reality, on our total budget, it's going to be a wash, right?
So, yeah, it'll be a wash, which I think is helpful, because then we don't actually need to access budget control in the traditional ways we would, which leaves us the possibility of having another offset when we true up at the end of the year. As long as we, as a board, know where we're tallying and how we're tallying, because it's not traditional section breaks, we're really looking at, with the exception of Tokenique. The rest of them, we're actually under, we're under our sections.
Correct. So what tips this sometimes is not necessarily the board's guideline that it has for class size. And you might think that, well, that's an 800 square foot classroom, it's the same as that, 800 square, they're not, depending like, where's the orientation of the interactive board? Where does the teacher's desk sit? Where does, so we have to actually go in there and place the desk to see, can we actually fit 23 kids in here, even if you could? I will say that we went to Tokenique today, and we'll be back at Tokenique tomorrow for second grade and fifth grade to look at that. Not necessarily for tipping, but perhaps for, can you actually get them in? I will say also, the staff, just so as you're aware, you know, some of the staff are relocating classrooms, perhaps even into the portable, because they are bigger than the classrooms. They're moving first grade over to fifth grade, because classrooms, so all of that is sort of going on simultaneously, so.
So that actually answers my other question, because some of these numbers at Royal, knowing their classrooms are fourth, didn't, didn't maybe make sense to me, but what you're saying is principals are moving classrooms out of traditional, okay. That answers my royal question, thank you. So I guess my question is, the board either can choose to remain a Um, so I guess my question is the board, board either can choose to remain aware and we'll track what are COVID and, and what are true enrollment breaks and we don't need another report, but just, I think we should, we should account for that differently. So at the end of the year, when we go back, we know what we're going back for and why. Um, and if we had a rush of 24 kindergarten students, all of a sudden, that's an enrollment factor. That's not necessarily a COVID factor. Everyone comfortable with that? This is how my brain works, so feel free to tell me if you're not. Duke?
You know, I agree, and I think at a previous meeting, we talked about Rich almost at the monthly finance committee meeting, just providing a COVID update from a financial perspective. I assume too, based on you knowing normal run rates from a utility standpoint, you'll be able to show kind of an, an increasing cost of utilities for some of the stuff we'll have to do around COVID.
So with the, uh, finance committee, when we do the financial reports, we'll almost have like a COVID cost center, uh, so you can see the, the, the true COVID expenditures and that'll include teachers, it can include technology or custodial equipment and supplies. Uh, and those are the accounts that'll run into a deficit unless a transfer is made or an appropriation is made.
Okay. I, I think it'll just be important as we go through this process to explain what was enrollment, what was COVID. So as long as you can do that and the board can understand it and know to ask the questions so that when we go to the other bodies, we're all clear on it, that would be helpful to me.
And again, these extra, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Sini.
These extra teachers associated with some shifts in classrooms that you had to do at certain schools, is that, is that basically the explanation? So you could do the distancing?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Essentially, they wouldn't fit in a classroom, so we had to create another section.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Mrs. Ritchie?
I just want to be clear because I wasn't sure I heard right. So we are currently, those, um, extra costs related to COVID in terms of sections are being included in the cost estimates for COVID. Is that correct?
Yes.
They're already included there. Okay.
They're in that one point, too. Other questions? Seeing none, are we ready?
Madge, can I just clarify? I just, I just want to make sure we're, are you talking about, discussing about?
Well, that's my next point.
Okay, all right. I just, I just wanted to clarify.
So my next point is, um, typically, the practice in Darien has been that at this point, we would either set the sections or we would authorize the superintendent to go out and should he need to hire, he can hire without us meeting for the specific reason of, in this case, maybe COVID, we've never done COVID, but like enrollment. So that if the administration already all of a sudden had 20 kids come in, we didn't need to meet again to approve the hiring of a teacher. So, um, it's new, we'd have to put a discussion item on again and we would also, I, the board would need to agree to authorize the superintendent to do that. That's what we've done the last two years. Other years, they've come and they've said, we need more teachers. That's not the situation we're in right now. We're under. Um, so we do have a little bit of wiggle room, but then we need to meet again and authorize.
But we are planning on meeting in what, two weeks or give or take, right?
Yeah. Which is also unique, you know what I mean?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So some of this, like how we usually do it is pandemic, more meetings in August. The board just needs to decide typically, this traditionally, this is the meeting where we set the sections and/or authorize. Do we want to kind of waive that to our next meeting, see if we have more information? Do we want to authorize the superintendent so they can hire? What, what will of the board? Mr. Sini?
I would suggest waiting to the next meeting, that special meeting, and then we'll make a final determination what, and superintendent can give us a recommendation, what he, flexibility he would like, unless you have a recommendation this evening.
Well, I'm probably going to make a determination on Token Eek tomorrow, right? So, um, that'll probably mean me, if we had to, to hire staff, waiting for a week of it.
Oh, we don't want that, though?
Yeah.
Which is never good in August.
Oh, we don't know, no, no.
I say we stick to the way we've done it and authorize the superintendent.
Mr. Burke?
I, I agree. I think especially under these conditions, let's give our superintendent some flexibility and to go out into the market and get staff if he needs it.
Okay. Um, anyone on Zoom? I'm trying to find you. Mrs. Ritchie?
I'm sorry, I actually couldn't really hear anything anyone said.
Okay, so.
So I guess my thought is if we're meeting in August and there's the time and flexibility to wait, I just think there's so much uncertainty. Um, not that I have an issue authorizing it now, but if we are going to meet earlier in August, so we'll have two meetings when we traditionally don't, I'm okay waiting if that's a consent, consensus.
I think, I think what Dr., uh, Dr. Adley, do you want to say your piece again?
I'm just saying that tomorrow, we've already visited, uh, Token Eek today, we'll be visiting again tomorrow when all the, the desks and so on are set up. And, um, I'll be in a position tomorrow really to make a determination of whether we're going to, uh, tip some sections or either because of COVID or enrollment related. So it just, it just, it's just a week removed from actually putting that into motion.
Okay. Mr. Dineen?
I just think even based on our earlier conversation about the ability to hire and Marge's comments too, we need to give the superintendent, the administration, the ability to go out and hire. It's a month away from school opening and getting running, so.
Yeah. I would say this is not uncommon also. This is kind of the practice of the board. But I'm open to ideas. Any, any other thoughts, Dave or Jill? I just don't want to miss you. Jill?
Yes, thank you. It is very hard to hear, uh, so I'm sorry. Um, Mike, Alan, are you actually needing to hire right now or we just have staff already and you're just making section assignment determinations? And all we're doing now is setting the number of sections so that you can allocate teachers correctly. Is that, is that the decision you're outlining right now?
Um, I don't know if I'm answering the question that you're actually asking just because I haven't difficulty hearing you, Jill, but essentially that tomorrow, we'll be making a determination of whether we need to hire two more staff members or not.
So I'll translate between the two of you.
Yes, please.
Jill is asking, are we just setting the number of sections, but you have enough staff to satisfy sections? And what I am hearing you saying is tomorrow, you may make a determination whether you need to have Marge begin a hiring process. So I think Jill, Alan, may actually need to hire additional staff. And the question is, do we wait a week or two to our next meeting or do we authorize him for that specific purpose of hiring staff, um, to utilize budget control and report back to the board? Does that help translate? Which we have done the last two years. Mr. Maroney?
So I would like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent.
So first, we need to make a motion to amend the agenda, um, to make it a discussion item. Sorry, I was on vacation last week.
I propose to make an amendment, uh, adjustment to the agenda to have this be an action item.
A second? Mrs. Stein seconds. All in favor? Um, that's Mrs. Ritchie, Mr. Sini, Mrs. Stein, Burke, Akman, Dineen, and Maroney, and Brown. All opposed? All abstaining? Mrs. McCammon, can you not hear? Are you in, are you in opposed? She's opposed.
Uh, no, 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 no.
Just delayed, just delayed.
I'm abstaining. I cannot hear.
She's abstaining.
She's abstaining. She can't hear. Um, thank you for the translation. Um, okay. And Mr. Maroney, do you have another motion?
So I would like to make a motion to, um, enable the superintendent to hire staff as he sees ne, as needed, as discussed. No?
Um, could I make a suggestion to that motion? To utilize budget control as needed?
To utilize budget control.
I like that one.
Thank you. I was going to suggest that, thank you.
Yeah. A second on that. Mrs. Stein, all in favor? Um, that's Ritchie, uh, Sini, Mrs. Stein, Burke, Akman, Dineen, and Maroney. And Brown. Oh.
Um, point of information, are we, when we said as per the discussion, is that a limit to the number discussed or what exactly is the scope of this?
Um, it's to authorize, I don't believe it was per the discussion. I think it was to authorize the superintendent to utilize budget control, um, as needed, to hire staff and to report back to the board.
Sorry, it was a little hard to hear. Thank you for that.
Yep. Um, so Dave, are you, your hand was up as a point of information, so let's redo that vote. All in favor? Okay? All opposed? All abstaining? Okay, so Mrs. McCammon is abstaining. I believe she's, can't hear all that well. Okay. All right. Thank you. I think that gives you the authorizations you need.
Thank you, Ramis.
All right. I feel like I'm eating the microphone. Um, any other questions on enrollment before we move forward? Seeing none, just please keep us updated on all of that. Discussion impossible acceptance of the contemplated gift from the Middlesex PTA. Is Mrs. Summers on the line?
Yes.
There she is.
And I know you saved the best for last. So the, uh, MPA has generously offered to purchase for us four picnic tables, four hour enclosed courtyard outside of the media center. Um, these, the intent initially was we use it for, had used it for celebrations and for different, to honor different students as citizens of the month, but given the current conditions, it would make it a very appropriate, um, alternative learning area for small group instruction. There, um, three round tables, one rectangular table.
Any board comments or questions?
I'm sorry. And the total was $2,903.62.
Thank you. Any board comments or questions? Mr. Maroney?
Just a general one of thank you for your generosity for the PTA.
Yes. Um, thank you very much to the Middlesex PTO for their generosity on this. Um, and, um, in this particular, in this environment, we'll be able to utilize them even more fully. Um, so are we, may I entertain a motion to, um, accept the?
Dave has it.
Oh, Dave, I'm sorry. Mr. Brown?
I was just going to say, Devin stole my thunder. I was going to say thank you very much to the Parents Association.
May I entertain a motion to approve the contemplated gift as proposed, um, from the Middlesex PTA? Mr. Sini so moves. Mr. Dineen seconds. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, everyone, and thank you once again to the Middlesex PTA for their generosity.
Thank you.
Um, we will move forward to an update on the master agenda, February through August 2020. Dr. Adley?
So this is, this is traditionally a, a process that the board goes through by listing its agenda items for, uh, their future budget, uh, sorry, future board meeting. So typically, uh, you don't have it in red here, but, uh, anything italicized or otherwise is a change from what was on before. And this, this sort of, I think it serves the board and serves the administration as an opportunity to, uh, calibrate of what's on agendas and, uh, keep a role in account of what we're, we're discussing and how board agendas might change. It's not a, it's not a legal requirement to do, it's just an operational thing.
I'll entertain questions. I'm going to consider this a read-only at the moment, given that our agenda items are going to change, I think, on the knee, uh, as we need so quickly. If anyone has a problem with what they see, but I would expect additions to this, as we always do see. Mr. Sini?
Is this somewhere where our, um, self-evaluation would go in in one of these meetings as well?
Yes, so I talked to Patrice, um, McCarthy from Cave yesterday. She's going to get that out to us with a link, um, as, as soon as possible, but we were trading emails on how to get that effectuated yesterday. So I think at this point with our master agenda, it's probably in, given that this is only going to August 25th, we, we can take a read-only. Usually we get it a little earlier, but I think because of COVID, um, we're a little, we're a little, it's changed our timeline. But read-only, look for updates, um, and by next meeting, hopefully we'll have a lot of updates.
The July 16th meeting reflects the annual review.
Yeah.
So it's on there.
This, um, we can go through this one.
Sorry, I thought that was the one we were going through, is it?
Yeah. I think it's, I'll run through it with you.
Okay, all right, okay.
Um, discussion, discussion impossible action on the proposed schedule for 2021 regular Board of Education meetings, um, and subcommittee meetings. I will let Dr. Adley explain, but I think, um, there was kind of a consensus if we could get subcommittee meetings scheduled so people could plan around them, it might be helpful. Dr. Adley, did the heavy lifting there? Do you want to talk about it? And then maybe the board can?
Well, the actual, the actual schedule for the board meetings, uh, the 2020 has already been filed. Um, so if you change any of those, that's special meetings, and then the 2021, you can still make changes to those should you need to do that. And we looked at, if you remember, we, we discussed for operational purposes and also perhaps for the board, um, for your own, like, personal planning, if we were able to schedule these meetings well in advance, because before you know it, the times, those time slaps are eaten up and so on and so forth. The worst that would happen is that you would have to cancel a meeting if you posted it, you would have to, you know, cancel it. Uh, but this gives us an opportunity to have regular finance, which we do, uh, facilities, uh, policy, uh, subcommittee meetings. And I think that will drive the work. I'm certainly open to like when they are, but.
Board comments and questions on this?
It's a good idea.
Duke says he likes it. That was what that nod was. Um, Mrs. Ritchie?
Just for clarification, since we're also, we would also be approving the subcommittee schedule, any changes to those? If we rescheduled, those would be special meetings, which obviously would mean the agendas would be set and they could not be changed. Um, as the chair of the finance committee, I can tell you the dates aren't great for me, but, um, I might not be chair in November, so it won't matter, but, um, just FYI.
Certainly willing to take that into consideration, dates that don't work for people.
Um, any other thoughts? I'll tell you some.
I think it's a good, I, I, sorry, I, I think it's a good idea. Uh, I will admit that Dr. Adley's been after, uh, after me on policy for a while, set specific dates, and I've been resistant because I tend to not know when I'm going to court, but since no one's going to court anytime soon, it's very easy to accommodate the schedule, so thank you.
Do we want to review then, uh, the dates and maybe change some of them based on Deb's comments or?
Yes.
Before adopting?
I'm fine and, um, we can hold on subcommittee. I'd like to get, um, the master calendar for the regular Board of Education meetings done, but I do think, um, one, we can always cha, the, the history on this is simply that one, we, we can change these in special meetings. So I imagine as someone's year goes by, something's going to need to change, but I do think sometimes the public has said to us, committee meetings pop up so quickly and they're generally early in the morning, so, um, some notice would be useful. But if the board would like to have another meeting to review subcommittee meetings and put out dates, especially current chairs with the information they have at the time, um, I think that's wise, but I do think we should probably move ahead on the proposed calendar for the regular Board of Education because I, I know that helps inform lots of future meaning, um, information.
Sure.
So, um, if there are no other questions with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the regular Board of Education meetings for the 2021 school year. Mr. Burke so moves. Mr. Maroney seconds. All in favor? That is unanimous. And then, um, at our next meeting, if, um, at least current committee chairs could forward dates and/or anyone, um, with their schedule on a committee as they're currently assigned, if there's a conflict, let us know. After that, I think we, if we really want to do this, we should probably just move forward to the best of our ability. Does that work for everyone?
Sounds good.
Okay. Great. Um, action items. Mrs. Stein, any personnel action items?
Yeah, so we are excited to appoint the special education department chair for the high school, who will start meeting with Kristen O'Reilly to, um, affect an orderly transition. And just to point out that we have many fewer resignations and retirements this year than you usually see, so.
Yes.
I don't know what that means.
That means good things. With that, can I entertain a motion to approve the PAR dated July 28th, 2020? Mr. Burke so moves, Mr. Danine seconds, all in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Um, is there any public comment with those who have hung in us? Hung in with us, I'm losing my words. Okay, seeing no public comment, um, I will, um, thank everyone for a long evening and for the work to come, but entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Seeny so moves, Mr. Danine seconds, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody, and good night.